And it's my hope today that this meeting will help educate us and more importantly, though, really inspire us as the policymakers here in Los Angeles.
Explaining the single-topic day's focus on the big issues that Angelenos face. District 13 Council President Eric Garcetti talks about water use in Los Angeles and policies that have helped in the conservation of water.
It's one of the perversions of California that anything that falls in terms of rainwater in the northern half of the state or at least north from us, we've engineered to quickly come down to Los Angeles as fast as possible. And yet, every bit of rainwater that drops in the basin in Los Angeles, we've engineered to wash out to the ocean without ever recharging our aquifers and cleaning it up and using it. Currently, Los Angeles consumes about 650,000 acre-feet of water a year. And this has remained constant for the last 25 years despite our growth of adding a million people. We've heard this a lot, but it's been the good policies of this city that have literally been able to accommodate a million more people with the same amount of water, which gives you an idea of how much water we are wasting. The low-flush toilet, energy-efficient appliances, et cetera, those things that we have required in all homes have helped sustain life here at the same time that we've been able to keep within our resources.
Raising the issue of the California Delta and talking about the politics of water, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl offers what he sees as the bottom line.
The state needs to get with agriculture and talk about two things. As you know, the Pacific Institute just came out with a study. And two things they recommend clearly is first, the conservation of the water that farmers use, better tiling, better use and capture of water, not the incredible waste that farmers do with waters. Secondly, farmers in our great valley, the breadbasket of the nation, should no longer do rice and cotton. You do that in wetland areas like North Carolina, South Carolina, and the areas on the East Coast. You don't do those kinds of crops in an area where water is scarce. If we got the farmers on board and stopped the politics of farmers, we, the people, outnumber those farms. We want them to be the crops of the planet, but not rice, not cotton, and more conservation when they get the water. We would get a dramatic increase in water for urban areas. The second thing we need to do right away, and no more talk about it, Governor, is the Delta. We got to deal with the Delta. We have to deal with the dams up there. We have to deal with the fish up there. We have to deal with the reality that that waterway coming in is a significant waterway. Just go up to Five and you see the aqueducts. I mean, if we don't get a handle on the Delta, I don't want to hear any more talk. It's not just the Katrina aspect. It's the shutting down of our water source to Southern California. So for God's sake, I said, every elected official, when you get back up there, deal with the Delta.
One of several presenters, Gilbert Ivy of the Metropolitan Water District, talks about the Sacramento River Delta located in Northern California and says the Delta is absolutely the issue.
And the key that really needs to be underscored here, and you've heard it and you've said it, Mr. Thiebaud's talked about it. A lot of folks in DWP will tell you about specifics here in the city, what you can do about the water supply, but the foundational issues that are facing Southern California, Central California, is the Bay Delta issue. That absolutely is the issue. I had the privilege and honor taking Councilmember Perry and Councilmember Hahn on a trip up to the Delta just a couple of months ago. And what you saw in the Delta was the very fact that you have a water supply that's sitting at sea level, basically. Landscape irrigation issues, population living 30 feet, up to 30 feet below sea level as the water's passing by, held back by peat moss type of levees that are not engineered levees, but are levees made of nothing more than just peat moss piled up after decades and decades of time. Peat moss is subjected to flooding, weakening, gophers, anything else that are happening there, wave action, wind action. And there have been studies that shows that a 6.5 earthquake in the center of that delta can wipe out up to 20 islands, which would cause salt intrusion from San Francisco Bay. It would inundate these islands, inundate the delta, and cause a disruption of a major supply of water to Southern California.
And joining us now is District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn. Ms. Hahn, welcome back to Council Week in Review.
It's good to be back here, Jack.
You started the day-long session on water by talking about a water shortage. Is it already here and how serious is it?
Well, I think it is a crisis that we're experiencing right now in terms of current water supply and future water supply. I actually think it is a very serious problem as a result of urban development and agricultural uses, you know, crisis involving the Sacramento Delta as well as climate change. I think it's really a crisis that all Angelenos ought to be paying attention to.
And the more you know about it, the more serious it looks. But for example, we'll go home this evening, we'll turn on the tap, and water's going to come out. Who's responsible for making sure that that actually happens?
Well, here in Los Angeles, of course, we have the Department of Water and Power, which is owned by the people of Los Angeles. And it is our local agency that makes sure that we have safe water and that we have a reliable water supply. But we get our water from the Metropolitan Water District. We get our water from Sacramento Delta as well as the Colorado River. And it's those two entities that could be in jeopardy for all of Los Angeles.
That's probably confusing to people. The DWP, Department of Water and Power, the MWD, the Metropolitan Water District, they're not the same organization. One is much bigger than the other.
Well, the Metropolitan Water District is the agency where we get about 70% of our water. We purchase the water from them. They get their water from the Colorado River and the Sacramento Delta. So we get about 70% of our water from MWD and about 30% from our own, you know, aqueducts and water tables.
The Delta, you mentioned the Colorado River as well. Whenever people talk about water in Los Angeles, the Colorado River certainly plays a major part in our water supply, and it's being oversubscribed with all the downstream cities and municipalities that want it.
Well, you know, I also heard another scary statistic that because of climate change, the Colorado River actually could be drained in several decades.
If you fly over it now, for example, if you're flying to the East Coast or to Florida, some days it literally doesn't get down to the Gulf of California. We're already in crisis there.
Absolutely. And, you know, people forget that, you know, we in Los Angeles, we're kind of in a desert. We're in a desert climate. I mean, we have 80-degree weather, you know, a majority of the year, and a lot of the rain that a lot of times we count on, we're not getting. So we're clearly dependent on the Delta and on the Colorado River.
Do we get our water supply from any other sources?
No. Again, we get about 70% from MWD. Regionally, I think we get about 50% of our water from MWD. So, you know, we're really dependent on them. And again, they get their water from the Delta, Sacramento Delta, and the Colorado River. We get about 30% from our own area, from, again, our water tables and the aqueducts.
During the meeting, of course, you mentioned your own trip to the Delta, which is located in Northern California. What was your experience there and how does the Delta really impact our water here in Los Angeles?
Well, you know, I think until you really see the Sacramento Delta and you begin to see the landscape surrounding the Sacramento Delta, you don't really realize how fragile that water supply actually is and how it is being compromised. Part of what we learned was that there was more salt water that was flowing into the Delta and not being washed out as well as it used to be. So the quality of the water is being compromised. We also certainly were very aware of earthquake fault lines that would, if we had a major earthquake, would absolutely compromise the Sacramento Delta. We talked about how the lower-line agricultural farm areas causes that water to seep lower down into the land around the Sacramento Delta, which also compromises the availability of that water. So we learned a lot about that. I think the goal of that trip was to sort of scare all of us in Los Angeles about how fragile the Sacramento Delta's future water supply really is.
And of course, you mentioned earthquake in Northern California, a big earthquake on the San Andreas and Southern California, we all know, could likewise disrupt our ability to get water from the Delta as well as from the Colorado River.
Absolutely. Which is really why I kind of wanted to bring this to the forefront of the city council by having an entire city council meeting that was dedicated to water, what we ought to be doing now to begin conserving and recycling our water.
The other big factor, of course, is we're in the middle of a years-long drought. Hopefully, it won't last too much longer, but it could. What mandatory measures are in place and what else might we do to, for example, spark conservation around here?
Well, you know, right now, it is against the law in Los Angeles to water any hard services. So you can't hose down your driveway or your patio anymore. You also cannot water your lawns during the winter time between about 11 o'clock in the morning and 3 o'clock in the afternoon. During the summer, you're not supposed to water it between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. In the restaurants, you should not be served water in the restaurant unless you ask for it. So those are some of the mandatory, you know, restrictions that we have right now.
We also sometimes hear the word rationing tossed about in relation to our water crisis. What sorts of measures might we be forced into in the future, do you think?
Well, you know, in the early '90s, we had sort of a water rationing program in effect. I think we ought to look at other cities who right now have a little stricter mandatory water usage laws on their books. For instance, Long Beach, it's a little more severe in terms of when you can water your lawns. I think they only allow people to water their lawns on a certain day of the week. Those might be things that we might look at. Also, I think we need to get more serious about having people planting drought-resistant landscaping around their homes and around new developments. I think the days of huge lawns in the front yard and the backyard may be over. We just can't afford to use our water in that way if there's going to be a time when we have a real shortage.
Well, you're certainly getting the message out here, but how do we educate everybody about water conservation and not just in the city of Los Angeles because it's a regional issue? I know you consider neighborhood councils a tremendous resource.
I do. And that's one of the things I asked for during that city council meeting was I really wanted to get DWP to begin working more closely with neighborhood councils. You know, neighborhood councils are all over the city. We have one in almost every community in the city of Los Angeles, just like we have educated them about emergency response. We have a lot of those people who are cert-trained, so in case of a major emergency, they would be able to be one of the first responders. I think in the same way, we get neighborhood councils really understanding this water crisis that we are experiencing and see if they might not take that message to their homes, to their schools, to their businesses, to their churches, and make sure that everyone is aware. We just can't use water or waste water like sometimes we've been accustomed to in the past.
Well, we're also putting more demands on the same water. Urban sprawl and growth contributing to the demand on our water supply. What changes might we see in the future, for example, planning and land use management?
Well, I think we just can't be any more approve, you know, development plans that don't really address water usage. I don't think we should be approving plans for any kind of density or any kind of growth anywhere without really looking at how that's going to, you know, take a demand on our water supply. I think we should start looking at purple pipes more seriously. And I think we ought to maybe look at charging developers a fee for water usage or to encourage purple pipe usage, just like we charge them for Quimby fees, we charge them for parks. So this might be something we look at in the future.
And Quimby fees, of course, are those fees that developers have to pay that would go into greenlands within development areas. But you mentioned purple pipewater. Is this recycled water?
Yeah. Purple pipes is just the notion that you can have two, you know, separate pipes going in and out of either a house or a business. One is for recycled water and the other is not recycled. And there's a lot of uses for recycled water. In fact, there's almost every possible use for recycled water. We ought to be using more for landscaping. We ought to be using more to run businesses. I know down in the refineries in the harbor area, they use water for their business. We ought to make that recycled water as opposed to, you know, fresh water.
You mentioned at the very beginning, when you introduced the whole topic before the Tuesday session, in your list of agencies that would be involved here, you mentioned the Bureau of Sanitation, and I assume that's where the BOS comes in.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, you know, we need to get them looking at ways that they can also begin to, you know, use recycled water and have conservation within their own department.
One of the things that concerned people, of course, I think this is also sometimes called gray water, is the possibility that it might not be as clean as other water. Sometimes, water that's been treated and cleaned up and filtered and all that is actually cleaner than some of the water that we otherwise encounter.
Well, you know, we in America sort of need to get over that kind of ick feeling about recycled water because that is absolutely right. Really, recycled water, by the time it's gone through the system, actually is pure water than when it started. There are places in other countries where water is used six times before it's finally, you know, let go. And we need to get over that feeling that we cannot use recycled water in a lot of ways. Once it goes through the system, it is absolutely pure, it's drinkable, and we need to get to a place where we understand how we can't just continue to use water one time.
Well, to get to where the legislative rubber meets the road, you introduced several motions on Tuesday for the council to consider. Can you briefly go over those motions and the results you expect?
Well, you know, one of them was I really wanted DWP to work with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment to see how they might reach out to neighborhood councils to get them this message about conservation. I also asked the department to have Orange County come in and make a presentation because Orange County has done a very successful purple pipe recyclable water program. And I think we always ought to take a look at other areas to see who's done it better than we've done it. I also asked for the department to come back and tell me, how is that purple pipe program with the refineries going? Because I've really asked for that to almost be, you know, a program that we mandate with the refineries. They ought to be using recycled water for the work that is done in a refinery. I want to know if that's happening. I want to know the status of that. And I also wanted to know, what are all the technologies that we have right now and we can use in the city to capture runoff water? You know, there's these permeable cement or materials that we can begin using on our streets, on playgrounds, in parks, so that when the water goes down, we capture it in our aquifer underneath the ground and it doesn't just run off. So I wanted to know, what are these technologies? Is the city of Los Angeles up to date on everything we can do to conserve, to recycle, and to capture the water that we have in the city of Los Angeles?
From what you just said, I'll bet you just triggered some questions of people watching saying, wait a minute, when it rains in Los Angeles, and it used to rain and probably will rain again, all that water goes into the LA River and the other concrete little canyons that we put for rainwater, and it just flows out to the ocean and we lose it?
Right. There's actually new material, permeable material, that the water will seep through and we can actually capture it and reuse it as opposed to having it run off into the ocean.
Critically important issue, and we thank you for coming in. District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks for having me, Jack.
And to learn more about water conservation and what you can do, log on to ladwp.com. You can listen to city council meetings as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Sundays at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 10th, 2008. On behalf of Frankie Yola and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Fridays at 10 o'clock here at City Hall. Also, on the first Friday of the month, we do meet in the council chambers in the San Fernando Valley at 10 o'clock in that first Friday of the month. We are still waiting for a quorum. Thank you to councilmembers Alarcon, Cardenas, Labonge, Rosendahl, Smith, Zine and Garcetti. We are waiting for Mr. Weisar, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Wesson. We do need two more members for a quorum. I believe we can begin our presentations. Fridays are our normal presentations. Our first is Councilmember Zine and then we will go to our next presentation. Councilmember Zine?
I'm joined this morning by Councilmember Greg Smith and members of the Los Angeles Police Department. We'll introduce yourselves later. We'll bring you up. But we're here to celebrate a man for 41 years of service to the people of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Police Department, Deputy Chief Mike Hillman, retiring. Chief Hillman retired one day and the next day he was the Assistant Sheriff of Orange County. Forty-one years of service to the people of Los Angeles. Served the United States Army prior to his deployment to the department. Worked a variety of assignments as a patrol officer, motorcycle officer, SWAT officer, supervisor, helicopter supervisor. Developed the LAPD's Mobile Field Force and Civil Disorder Training Program in 1992. Provided national, international training to interested law enforcement agencies. Promoted to Captain in January 1996. Commanded northeast of 77th Street areas, Transit Rail Division, West Los Angeles area and Air Support Division. From the rank of Captain, there's the commander rank, deputy chief, assistant chief. In recent history, no one has gone from the rank of Captain to deputy chief, other than Chief Hillman. Because in 2002, he was promoted from Captain of Police to Deputy Chief, created the Department's Special Operations Bureau and Managed Operations West Bureau. Created the Incident Management and Training Bureau, which developed a 21st Century Mobile Field Force Training Program, preparing officers department-wide to deal with large crowd management incidents, resulting in a successful May Day 2008. Most recently, most recently served his department as a Special Assistant to Chief of Police. And as I stated, he's now the Assistant Sheriff of Orange County. There's been a number of changes in Orange County and when Chief Hillman retired, the Sheriff of Orange County decided to bring him in as an Assistant Chief. And I have to give a personal comment. I've known Chief Hillman for many, many years. We were motorcycle officers together and there was a night that I'll never forget, when he was working with Motorcycle Officer Mel Cunningham. And we were all working south of the Santa Monica Freeway and it was about end of watch time and we rang off at a game well near Vernon in Crenshaw. And there was a shell station at that location. And I remember going into the restroom when I confronted an individual who was shooting up on drugs and a major altercation ensued at that location. This man came out of the gas station, broke the plate glass window at the gas station trying to escape. My partner at that time was Mike Bach, another motorcycle officer. And the station prepared to put out a help call. And lo and behold, on this Harley Davidson with Mel Cunningham, which was the only help call I put out in my 40 years with the Los Angeles Police Department. Mike Hillman was there to come to my rescue and that of my partner and take this individual into custody, who was very, very high on drugs and very difficult to control. But Mike Hillman is the epitome of a Los Angeles police officer. A police officer who was there for his partners, who was there for the public. This man had a reputation throughout the department. Officers would follow him in the battle anywhere he led them. There was never a reservation, never any apprehension. When Mike Hillman asked you to go, you'd go. When he commanded the SWAT team, when he was in air support, those officers would do whatever he asked without any hesitation or reservation. A legend within the ranks of the Los Angeles Police Department. He has a brother who's also a member of the Police Department. And now, in Orange County, he's brought that strong tradition of law enforcement, that strong tradition of law enforcement bonding to protect people to Orange County. So personally, on the personal side, I was very honored to have this presentation, this resolution prepared for him, commending him for the many years of dedicated service to the people of Los Angeles and all the officers that worked for him, under him through his 41 years of service. And there's a celebration that's going to occur this afternoon at the Los Angeles Police Academy. But I also want to turn it over to my colleague Greg Smith and then we'll hear from the other ranking officers of the Los Angeles Police Department, Councilmember Greg Smith.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. And Mike, it's really glad to hear that your career survived after working with Dennis. Mine didn't do so well after I worked with him. But, you know, I just want to talk about Mike a little bit. When I came on the department in 1992, we were going through tremendous change in LAPD, the result of the Rodney King incident and the riots in LA. And I went to a Mobile Field Force training with then-Captain Hillman, who was the trainer of all of us in the whole department. The entire department went through Mike's training. And I sat there and watched this guy talk about what we're doing to change our department, to do a better job and really be better cops and be better citizens at the same time. And I just sat and listened to this guy talk and said, wow, this is a guy that's got his act together, he knows his job, he knows what we need to do as cops in this city to be better cops and to be a better city. And I was so impressed with the entire training. A few years later, I saw what he did in the Democrat National Convention and all the other activities that we did. And I remember after the DNC convention and lawsuits we got, sitting on this council, dealing with some of those lawsuits and hearing that Mike Hillman actually stood up and said, "LAPD did it wrong." And I said, "That's going to cost the city a lot of money, but if Mike Hillman says we were wrong, we were wrong." And it changed again the way LAPD does its job. This is a man who's a cop's cop, first and foremost, but he's honest to the end of the day. He's a straight shooter and you never had to worry about Mike Hillman not telling the truth and not doing the right thing because he always did the right thing. And at the end of his career here at LAPD, and I know he's going on to other problem departments, we as a department, as LAPD, are a better department for having Mike Hillman with us and train us and be a part of our department. And as a city, we are better because of that too. Mike Hillman is one of the men I truly respect for his entire career at LAPD and much like Darryl Gates, he was a cop's cop. He always was concerned about the officer on the street and about the department. And that is a great testimony to his career here in the city of LA. And I also, also just really enjoyed his friendship. He was just a good man to be called a friend. And so I hate to see him go, but I know his talents and I know he's needed in Orange County right now. And I just wish him well down there. I know they need him desperately down there. And I know what he did here made us a better department. And what's going to happen down in Orange County is only going to be good because he's going to take all that expertise and training down there to help them. So Mike, you worked for us for 41 years and like Darryl Gates, you're going out, you're kind of working for nothing for us at the end there because you're pensioned out, so you're done. But we're just proud to have you here and I'm proud to have learned from you and I hope I'm a better councilman and a better citizen and a better cop because of it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Zine, we do have Mr. Labonge. You want to?
After the Police Command.
Okay.
And I want to add that at 33 years, you reached 90% of your pension. So from 33 to 41, you were working for 10%. He was given 110%, but he was only getting paid 10%. So Chief McDonald.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine, Councilmember Smith for your nice words. Councilmember Zine talked a little bit about Mike Hillman, the cop, and Councilmember Smith about Mike Hillman as the cop's cop. But as you well know, policing is a people business. And Mike Hillman is head and shoulders above most anybody else in police management, I'd say, in the nation, as far as taking care of his people. His people in the department, he would always make sure that they were taken care of before his needs were met. He was always a firm hand, but a fair hand. And I think that the end of the day, that's what any officer would want. Mike Hillman would be first out there when it was an unusual occurrence or a disaster of any kind. Mike Hillman could be, could be always counted on to be the first one out there, taking charge, putting things in order and taking care of business, but also taking care of people and treating people within the department well, treating people in the community well. And that's a piece that I think often goes lost when we talk about people. Mike Hillman is the epitome of somebody who comes forward, knows what public service is, stands up there and at the end of the day, what's best for the community, what's best for the people of Los Angeles, they were out there to be, protect and serve. That is something we talk about being sworn. We swear an oath to protect and serve the people of this city. Mike Hillman takes that oath as serious as anybody I've ever met. Mike looks at things and says if it's worth doing, it's worth doing well. And he sometimes, the people would say, "Mike, you take that to an extreme." Well, he did and he took it to an extreme for all the right reasons, to protect this city and protect the citizens. But at the end of the day, to take care of the officers who are the ones we entrust to do that job, the civilian employees of our department who support the rank and file out there doing the job, it's a big package, it's a big team, the whole city's a team. Mike would reach out to the fire department, the CHP, the FBI, the DEA, you name it, and he would be the ambassador for the LAPD, an ambassador for the city of Los Angeles. So to see Mike move on, I could not be happier for the Orange County Sheriff's Department because they're getting a gem. Mike has an international reputation as a tactician, but locally here, more importantly, as a gentleman, as a cop's cop and as somebody anybody could look to and say, "My interests are well protected because Mike Hillman is out there on the job." Mike, we all wish you the very best. On behalf, I'm joined here with Earl Pasinger, Richard Tefank, command staff from throughout the department. But for all the men and women who aren't here today, from both the department and the city family, as well as the communities that you've served for so many years, a sincere thank you to you and to your family for 42 years of service that I would hold up to any cop and say, "This is what you want to aspire to." Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. We have Mr. Labonge, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. It's great to see a great city employee who cares about the citizens of Los Angeles. I think Chief McDonald said it so well. Mike Hillman had a great ability, to the students who are visiting today, to integrate many different disciplines as public service took its course. I was involved with Michael when he was in Metropolitan Division as Lieutenant, I don't know, was that 20 years ago or whatever it was? And always working other departments together for what is best for the city. And to serve the city so well, to be born in the city, to be raised, and the rampart wasn't there when you grew up there, it was probably central area, and you grew up right there near Alvarado and Temple and you had an impact. You had impact. And I just want to thank you because you made a difference. I think of my mentor, the late, great Mel Davis, who played with Baltimore in the 50s. He said about Johnny Unitas, he said Johnny gets into a huddle and makes 10 men go down the field and score. Mike Hillman gets in a huddle and makes everybody believe. And believe in the mission and believe in serving people and believe of doing the right thing. As Councilmember Smith said, "You came to this council and said we did wrong," which was an outstanding compliment to your character. Because that's so important about an agency, a government is its integrity. But at the same time too, you did right when you saved young Officer Zine, who had so much hair on his head there. He lost it over the years. Mike Hillman, I love you as a human being because you are what it is about being a public servant. You're so, I'm proud of you, I'm proud that you're in, in serving another part of the state, but I hope one day that something here in Los Angeles can do, because there's nothing like, you're like Tommy Lasorda. If I cut you at the wrist, you're going to bleed LA blue. Thank you very much, Mike Hillman.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise with the greatest respect to honor Chief Hillman. It was not often you can come across a person who can say to you, "I grew up there, I know what it's like to be the one person who grew up with a lot of the other," I don't think they said homeboys at that time, "but a lot of the other neighborhood guys." And I did not exactly fit in. And I understood what it is to be that outsider. And he grew up understanding that and realizing that when he turned around, it's exactly what's happening to the very same neighborhoods he grew up in. And to see him actually become that agent of change in shifting a culture of a department where you no longer look at human beings as numbers or as obstacles or as those folks who would tear down our communities, but as human beings who have issues, who have problems, who can be treated with respect, that is a cultural shift in the Police Department. And we know the history of the 60s and 70s. We know it was hard for many of community members. We do know that there was this issue of speak loudly with a heavy stick. He did not do that. He spoke softly, carried the big stick, but did not need to use it. He understood what it took to create that change. To have you, sir, as that leader during a crisis in McCarthy Park, it's almost like someone upstairs wrote the script and said, "We need Chief Hillman there." And you set the record straight. You treated the folks as human beings. I sat with you at that table when people were yelling at us, when people were emotional, when women and children would say, "I have nightmares of police beating me up," of children saying, "I want to be an officer, I no longer want to be an officer because of what happened to my mom and dad, what happened to me as a child." Chief Hillman, when they understand what you've done and when they begin to learn how this is changing, those nightmares could turn into dreams for them again because of your work. So I grew up in the neighborhoods, I understand what it means. I shared with Dennis that at one time at 16 years old, I was beat up by an officer. I understand what it means to be a
In the Democrat National Convention and all the other activities that we did. And I remember after the DNC convention and lawsuits we got, sitting on this council, dealing with some of those lawsuits and hearing that Mike Hillman actually stood up and said, LAPD did it wrong. And I said, that's going to cost the city a lot of money, but if Mike Hillman says we were wrong, we were wrong. And it changed again the way LAPD does its job. This is a man who's a cop's cop, first and foremost, but he's honest to the end of the day. He's a straight shooter and you never had to worry about Mike Hillman not telling the truth and not doing the right thing because he always did the right thing. And at the end of his career here at LAPD, and I know he's going on to other problem departments, we as a department, as LAPD, are a better department for having Mike Hillman with us and train us and be a part of our department. And as a city, we are better because of that, too. Mike Hillman is one of the men I truly respect for his entire career at LAPD. And much like Darryl Gates, he was a cop's cop. He always was concerned about the officer on the street and about the department. And that is a great testimony to his career here in the city of L.A. And I also just really enjoyed his friendship. He was just a good man to be called a friend. And so I hate to see him go, but I know his talents and I know he's needed in Orange County right now. And I just wish him well down there. I know they need him desperately down there. And I know what he did here made us a better department. And what's going to happen down in Orange County is only going to be good because he's going to take all that expertise and training down there to help them. So, Mike, you worked for us for 41 years and like Darryl Gates, you're going out, you were kind of working for nothing for us at the end there because you're pensioned out. So, you are done. But we're just proud to have you here and I'm proud to have learned from you and I hope I'm a better councilman and a better citizen and a better cop because of it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Councilman. Thank you.
Mr. Zine, we do have Mr. Labonge. You want to?
After the police command.
Okay.
And I want to add that at 33 years, you reached 90% of your pension. So, from 33 to 41, you were working for 10%. He was given 110%, but he was only getting paid 10%. So, Chief McDonald.
Thank you, Councilman Zine, Councilman Smith, for your nice words. Councilman Zine talked a little bit about Mike Hillman, the cop, and Councilman Smith about Mike Hillman as the cop's cop. But as you well know, policing is a people business. And Mike Hillman is head and shoulders above most anybody else in police management, I'd say, in the nation as far as taking care of his people. His people in the department, he would always make sure that they were taken care of before his needs were met. He was always a firm hand, but a fair hand. And I think that the end of the day, that's what any officer would want. Mike Hillman would be first out there when it was an unusual occurrence or a disaster of any kind. Mike Hillman could be always counted on to be the first one out there, taking charge, putting things in order and taking care of business, but also taking care of people and treating people within the department well, treating people in the community well. And that's a piece that I think often goes lost when we talk about people. Mike Hillman is the epitome of somebody who comes forward, knows what public service is, stands up there and at the end of the day, what's best for the community, what's best for the people of Los Angeles, they were out there to protect and serve. That is something we talk about being sworn. We swear an oath to protect and serve the people of this city. Mike Hillman takes that oath as serious as anybody I've ever met. Mike looks at things and says if it's worth doing, it's worth doing well. And he sometimes, the people would say, Mike, you take that to an extreme. Well, he did. He took it to an extreme for all the right reasons, to protect this city and protect the citizens. But at the end of the day, to take care of the officers who are the ones we entrust to do that job, the civilian employees of our department who support the rank and file out there doing the job, it's a big package, it's a big team, the whole city's a team. Mike would reach out to the fire department, the CHP, the FBI, the DEA, you name it, and he would be the ambassador for the LAPD, an ambassador for the city of Los Angeles. So, to see Mike move on, I could not be happier for the Orange County Sheriff's Department because they're getting a gem. Mike has an international reputation as a tactician, but locally here, more importantly, as a gentleman, as a cop's cop, and as somebody anybody could look to and say, my interests are well protected because Mike Hillman is out there on the job. Mike, we all wish you the very best. On behalf, I'm joined here with Earl Pasinger, Richard Tefank, command staff from throughout the department. But for all the men and women who aren't here today, from both the department and the city family, as well as the communities that you've served for so many years, a sincere thank you to you and to your family for 42 years of service that I would hold up to any cop and say, this is what you want to aspire to. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. We have Mr. Labonge, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. It's great to see a great city employee who cares about the citizens of Los Angeles. I think Chief McDonald said it so well. Mike Hillman had a great ability, to the students who are visiting today, to integrate many different disciplines as public service took its course. I was involved with Michael when he was in Metropolitan Division as lieutenant, I don't know, was that 20 years ago or whatever it was? And always working other departments together for what is best for the city. And to serve the city so well, to be born in the city, to be raised, and the rampart wasn't there when you grew up there, it was probably central area, and you grew up right there near Alvarado and Temple, and you had an impact. You had impact. And I just want to thank you because you made a difference. I think of my mentor, the late, great Mel Davis, who played with Baltimore in the 50s. He said about Johnny Unitas, he said Johnny gets into a huddle and makes 10 men go down the field and score. Mike Hillman gets in a huddle and makes everybody believe. And believe in the mission, and believe in serving people, and believe of doing the right thing. As Councilmember Smith said, you came to this council and said, we did wrong, which was an outstanding compliment to your character. Because that's so important about an agency, a government is its integrity. But at the same time, too, you did right when you saved young Officer Zine, who had so much hair on his head there. He lost it over the years. Mike Hillman, I love you as a human being because you are what it is about being a public servant. You're so, I'm proud of you, I'm proud that you're in serving another part of the state, but I hope one day that something here in Los Angeles can do, because there's nothing like, you're like Tommy Lasorda. If I cut you at the wrist, you're going to bleed L.A. blue. Thank you very much, Mike Hillman.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise with the greatest respect to honor Chief Hillman. It was not often you can come across a person who can say to you, I grew up there, I know what it's like to be the one person who grew up with a lot of the other, I don't think they said homeboys at that time, but a lot of the other neighborhood guys. And I did not exactly fit in. And I understood what it is to be that outsider. And he grew up understanding that. And realizing that, when he turned around, it's exactly what's happening to the very same neighborhoods he grew up in. And to see him actually become that agent of change in shifting a culture of a department where you no longer look at human beings as numbers, or as obstacles, or as those folks who would tear down our communities, but as human beings who have issues, who have problems, who can be treated with respect, that is a cultural shift in the police department. And we know the history of the 60s and 70s. We know it was hard for many of community members. We do know that there was this issue of speak loudly with a heavy stick. He did not do that. He spoke softly, carried the big stick, but did not need to use it. He understood what it took to create that change. To have you, sir, as that leader during a crisis in McCarthy Park, it's almost like someone upstairs wrote the script and said, we need Chief Hillman there. And you set the record straight. You treated the folks as human beings. I sat with you at that table when people were yelling at us, when people were emotional, when women and children would say, I have nightmares of police beating me up, of children saying, I want to be an officer, I no longer want to be an officer because of what happened to my mom and dad, what happened to me as a child. Chief Hillman, when they understand what you've done and when they begin to learn how this is changing, those nightmares could turn into dreams for them again because of your work. So, I grew up in the neighborhoods, I understand what it means. I shared with Dennis that at one time at 16 years old, I was beat up by an officer. I understand what it means to be at the other end of that stick. But I also know that in meeting you, in meeting the great men and women in blue, that we are going through a dramatic change. And it's because of what you embody, you're a living symbol of what this police department could be. And I thank you for that, Chief Hillman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, listening to Ed, who speaks from the heart, is very compelling. But I'm standing up coming from my heart. When Augustine Contreras got gunned down in the Venice parking lot, just turned 17 years old, Shoreline Crips did it, you know, the Culver City Boys v. 13 and all this stuff was happening, we had an incredible combustible situation in Oakwood. We went in there and you were in charge. I was very concerned. I was concerned about what might happen next, who's going to retaliate with who. It's all insanity, this gang business. It's totally over the top. And you were very calm, you were in control, you knew what you were doing, you did the right thing. So, it isn't anything coming out of like we do all the time around here, say great things about people because da-da-da-da. It's because you spoke through your action, the leadership, that is the leadership I commend in the LAPD. When I saw you standing here a minute ago, I said, what are you doing here? And you told me you're down in Orange County. I didn't know you were gone. You left quietly almost until this very moment. Of course, Orange County needs your help. And for the new sheriff to ask you to come in and help her organize and create a quality sheriff's department, you're doing for us, because we're all connected, you know, Orange County, L.A. County, it's all the same. The people are all here in Southern California, is a great plus for us in Los Angeles to have you there in Orange County. I'm expecting you to come back. After a year there, you clean up that act down there, you make it work. And the reason is because you're a sage, you're a wise man with the experience that we need. Those recruits, good people, good intentions, need you. We need you. You are a mentor at this point in your life. And, you know, you've got no hair like me, you know, we're at that point in our life. But to give back to the young ones, that kind of experience that only you can give, your appreciation of people, that's what I care about, is people. So, bless you for going to Orange County. You've got an opportunity when you come back to continue to be with us and helping us. We have huge issues here that are not resolved. We like you a little bit in the training academy over there, teaching a module and helping people understand things. And we also need you around the streets if we have another crisis of any situation. But we know you're just across the county line below. God bless you and thank you for all you've done for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. I just want to add my congratulations. We had a chance to talk earlier today before the council meeting started, and I think what everyone has said is true. You're the, you know, cop's cop and someone that when you're in charge, you are in charge and you're able to, whether it be diffuse a situation, to electrify your officers and their commitment to caring about Los Angeles. And he quietly said to me that, you know, he will always be an LAPD guy, no matter where he goes. And I think that speaks volumes. And so we know that you will, you'll be not far from us in Orange County, but know that your heart is here in the Los Angeles Police Department. And with that many years, you have had a huge influence on this agency and I know will continue to have with all of the, I think, things you've put in place and policies and procedures that you were responsible for. So, I just want to add my congratulations on your retirement and sadness that you're leaving us, but it's our loss and Orange County's gain, but we know you're only a phone call away. So, congratulations. And with that, Mr. Zine. Oh, excuse me. Now, we have two other, we do have two other people who pressed their button now, sorry. Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. A lot has been said, but I don't want to repeat too much. I just want to personally thank you for your service. And I also want to say, being an officer and being a male, a man, I think it's very important that people recognize that much of what is said about you is contradictory of what a lot of people feel an officer should be. People feel an officer should be somebody who's burly and strong and knows how to really get in there and be physical. You actually are being, people are sharing your accolades about how you're an intellectual and how you're somebody that doesn't puff out his chest, but somebody who actually uses his heart and his mind to do things the right way. And that is an example, not only to all of the officers around the world and the way in which we should be caring ourselves when we have that tremendous responsibility. And it is a dangerous job. But look at you. Here you are with all the examples behind you, saving other officers' lives, things of that nature, and coming in with the right attitude and the right kind of purpose. But also in addition to that, as a man, I would like to thank you so much for being such a tremendous example. It's really easy for us to want to be angry and then use our muscles or our strength in the physical way, but it's a lot harder to put that back and use your intellect and your heart and still get the job done in a much better way. Congratulations.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, it's always strange coming in at the end of one of these because everything that needs to be said about you has probably been said. Let me just say two points. One is, I believe that the report that you produced as a result of May Day last year, and not just the report you produced, but how you produced it and then your commitment to implementation of the reforms, not just while you were there, but for the future, I believe is actually one of the finest moments in the history of leadership in this department. I mean, it is truly a singular moment in departmental leadership. And you, and frankly, you know, you singularly need to be acknowledged for that. The second point is, I am just delighted that I will get to continue to work with you in the coming years in the law enforcement profession. I knew you weren't going anywhere and I'm glad that, I'm glad to see that was the case. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Chief. And just a quick congratulations. It's been a pleasure working with you, the short two and a half years that I've been here. And I've always approached what you've told me in terms of some situations that we find ourselves in, whether in the streets when an incident has happened, or policy issues that you're someone I can trust and listen to with your wealth of experience and knowledge. So, thank you for your service to the city of L.A. and thank you for serving this council in a very honest and straightforward way with us. Thank you so much.
And Chief Hillman, let me add my wishes that you are the standard. You are the standard in the department. You're somebody who privately, when you talk to the men and women of the police department and you ask them, you know, who's the one that you look up to, who are the folks there who you really have a lot of respect for across, you know, all sorts of perspectives in LAPD. And like any large organization, the police department is full of many perspectives, but you seem to unify the department. And not only is it our loss, but I hope that unity is reflected in the way that you've taught leadership. And that training mission is probably the most important thing you do because when you think about that multiplier effect that you've had in this department, there's going to be many Hillmans out there coming up the ranks. And we thank you for that because it means that this city and this department is strong because of what you've done. So, congratulations.
Well, good morning to everyone and certainly thank you very much for the kind words. This is a bittersweet time. This is my 42nd year here. I know everyone here well. As has already been said, I grew up in this community, so I have a vested interest in the city of Los Angeles. I was going to have to leave here at the end of this year and I didn't want to quit. I wanted to continue in law enforcement, so the opportunity came up to be able to do something good and to be able to continue on. But in all of the kind words that you've said, certainly, I don't believe that they apply to me. They apply to the people that are coming up within this organization, the constituency that you see behind me here, the partnership, the community itself has just been fantastic. All of the support that you have provided to me over the years, I'm going to sum it up in just one word so I can let you go on with your business. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. President, Joe Biden and Mike Hillman went to the same math class. He's going to sum it up in one word. Thank you very much. One sentence.
Thank you very much. And our next presentation will be from Councilmember Bill Rosendahl of the 11th District. While we are waiting that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Labonge for an introduction of a school that is here.
And as we just honored a great Mike Hillman, I'd like to have the children stand up from the Los Angeles New Charter School. This school opened the first time here in September. We have 75 sixth graders. They are dedicated to community engagement and social justice, currently housed on Wilshire Boulevard near the Miracle Mile. And their two teachers, Ms. Ackerman and Ms. Kennedy, we thank you very much. Welcome. New Los Angeles Charter School.
And just one minute more, Mr. Rosendahl, if you can pause for one minute. We're going to run through the agenda just real quick because I know some people are excused to go a little early, if you can call the roll.
Alecon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weisar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business?
Approval, the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas moves. Mr. Weisar seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Items number one and two are items which public hearings have been held and the reports have been submitted for those items.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call those special? If not, let's go ahead and take those up. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Next are items three through 18, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. We've got cards on seven, so we'll call those special. Open and close the public hearings on the others. Any other specials? Seven, sorry, three through 18? If not, let's take up the balance. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote. Thank you. If we can go to the continuation agenda.
Item number 19 and 20 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call this special? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Zine, 20.
20. And anybody wishing to call 19 special? We also have a card from the public, so we'll call that for Mr. Alecon and Card as well. If you can call the roll in the special meeting, please.
Alecon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weisar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First item, please.
Item number 21 is a veto message from the mayor. 10 votes are required to override the mayor's veto, and there is a card on this item.
All right. We'll call that special. Card from the public and I believe missed rule, too.
21, I think we were, 21 were just a recommend, receive and file.
Okay. We have a card, so we'll call it special and we'll come to it.
Got it.
Okay. Next items, please.
Next are items 22 through 27, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
And we've got cards on 23, 24, and 26, so we'll call those special. 22, 25, and 27. Anybody wishing to call special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And if we can continue the special items back into the regular meeting and adjourn the special meeting and hand it back to Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Appreciate it.
It's my pleasure, Mr. President, and thank you for your leadership as president of our city council. Mark Etzel has been executive director of the UCLA Center for HIV Identification, Prevention and Treatment Services for over the last 10 years, changing the world with groundbreaking work on HIV and AIDS policy. He's a member of the University Wide AIDS Research Program Task Force, an advisory body at the University of California's HIV Research Program, as well as Los Angeles County's HIV Prevention Planning Committee. Mark earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in history from the University of California Santa Barbara and a Master's degree in public policy with an emphasis in health administration from the University of Chicago. During graduate school, Mr. Etzel co-authored a manuscript funded by the Joyce Foundation examining the financial impact of long-term care on state Medicaid budgets in the Midwest, still relevant today, I might add. Prior to his employment at the UCLA Center for Community Health, Mark was the Associate Director of Policy for AIDS Project Los Angeles. And that was during the height of the epidemic. As we all know, from 1985 to 95, tens of thousands of men succumbed to that tragedy. When he was employed there, in his role, Mr. Etzel analyzed federal, state, and county policies to determine their impact on people with the HIV disease and advocated at each level of government for sound HIV policy. In addition, he worked for a number of years as a consultant in Los Angeles-based public affairs firm dealing with intergovernmental matters. His projects focused on health insurance, which is still a disaster, folks. We hope our new president focuses on that, telecommunications and waste management issues. Mr. Etzel is dedicated to HIV policy research, in particular examining different models of care that impact on individual access to service. He's also exploring strategies to more effectively use data from HIV research projects to shape health policy at local, state, and federal levels. Mark, thank you for all you have contributed to making our society a healthier place to live. I just got off the phone from him. He was to be here, but he is presently in chemotherapy. He has HIV and he is living through it. He's struggling at this point. We all need to keep him in our prayers. He's been one of our true leaders, someone who's made a huge difference in the last 20 years with the Holocaust that the gay community has been suffering through. I'd like to ask Steve Simon to say a few words from our city here, and I also want Lee Kazinsky from UCLA to say a few words. Steve, why don't you come on up first?
Thank you, Councilmember. Good morning, Council. I just have to add a personal note about Mark. My career in HIV started as an attorney at AIDS Project Los Angeles in the mid-'90s, and Mark was an Associate Director of Public Policy. He taught me that I could serve more people, not just as their attorney handling their individual cases, but by coming to city council, by coming to Sacramento and D.C. to work on the policy issues that made the difference. And then I came to the city five years ago, next week, and Mark was at UCLA, the Center for HIV Identification, Prevention, and Treatment Services. And UCLA CHIPS has been a partner in our testing initiative, been a partner in our major research for the entire five years I've been here. The city of Los Angeles could not run our HIV prevention programs were not for the work that Mark has done. So, he's a personal friend of mine, he's a colleague and mentor of mine. My thoughts and prayers are with him, that his health will be back, that he will be back at CHIPS, he will be back working with us. And today, thank you very much for recognizing the incredible work he's done. Thank you.
And before Lee speaks, I want you to know that prevention, intervention, and awareness is key. Mark has saved lives by his work. He has saved people from being infected. And he's also been a major player in keeping people alive who are suffering with the disease. There are many people walking around feeling good and taking their meds, and we can thank Mark for that. Lee?
Thank you. It's an honor and privilege to be here on Mark's behalf and to accept this proclamation and thank the city council for it. If Mark were here, he would be really uncomfortable that all this attention were focused on him. And he would remind you of the leadership role that Los Angeles has played in the HIV/AIDS epidemic, from 1981, when the disease was first identified at UCLA, to when this city council passed the first municipal legislation in the United States protecting the rights of people living with AIDS, to the consistent appointment of dynamic leaders in the city AIDS coordinator position to coordinate services in the city. Mark has been dedicated to bringing over $20 million of research and services to Los Angeles County and to ensuring that science-based public policy decisions have been made at the state and local, at the local, state, and national level. So, Mark's a great colleague. We are honored to have him as a fellow citizen and grateful to you today for recognizing his accomplishment. Thank you.
On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'm presenting this to you. Mark, we love you. We know you'll be seeing this video to UCLA. Thank you. Thank you. We will. We will shoot you there. We'll take a photo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next presentation is from Council President Protam and Councilwoman from the 2nd District, Wendy Gruel.
Colleagues and I am joined.
Don't think about me. I was working on Sundays, too.
You Sundays, too? Oh, my goodness.
Because I used to speak French.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Well, I am joined, colleagues, by Mr. Jack Weiss, our councilmember from the Fifth District. Today, we are honoring Larry, I don't want to make Benny Dees, one of our city's most valuable assets. He's a Specialist Reserve Officer for the Los Angeles Police Department. He represents the many, many Reserve Officers in the Police Department that help us keep our streets safe. He has served as a Specialist Reserve Officer for the Los Angeles Police Department for the North Hollywood Division for over twenty years, where he has been an example of loyalty and has demonstrated a true commitment to protect and serve. He has worked eight days a week, excuse me, eight hours a day, five days a week, although he told me he works on Sundays, too, above and beyond the sixteen hours per month that Reserve Officers are required to work, greatly benefiting our North Hollywood Division. While I would say that he's done this for the money, his compensation for this satisfaction of making really is a positive difference in our community. He was born and raised in Tangiers, Morocco, where he worked for the U.S. consulate before coming to the United States in nineteen fifty-four. Larry has always been skilled in linguistics. He is fluent in English, Spanish, French, Italian, and Arabic, and helping him in his work at the consulate and, of course, later for the Los Angeles Police Department. He's particularly been helpful to the North Hollywood Detective Division, working with the Major Assault Crime Table, and has used his fluency in five different languages to assist with thousands of translations during investigations and interviews, both in person, over the phone, and in the field. True to his commitment to serve, showing that he is still young at eighty-eight years old, Larry continues to learn new skills and he can be even more valuable to the detectives. He recently ventured into the computer world, learning more about the various software programs that assist the detectives with their investigations, and supports the MAC detectives by compiling the elder abuse reports and inputting the information to the computer to generate case numbers. It is good to see Larry feeling better. I know you've taken some time off due to an unfortunate accident, but I know, I read this quote about his time off, and it demonstrate his dedication to his work. Larry told his supervisor, "Boss, I'm going to cut back on my hours and only come in one day a week until I get stronger, but if you need me, just call me, and don't give my work to anybody else." Larry is blessed with four children, although I guess we can't call you children anymore, right? I guess we can. Kids, you can, okay. Fortuna, Sonny, and Jackie, seven grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren, and his great son-in-law, Dr. Andy Ippoliti. And in his spare time, he has a Mason, Scottish Rite, and Shriner thirty-second degree. We are so proud of his contributions, and I know particularly, you know, we know Fortuna pretty well. You did a good job there, I have to say.
Thank you.
You did a very good job with Fortuna. But Larry, you are the kind of individual that really makes the city work, and we're proud to be able to have you in the City of Los Angeles and our North Hollywood Division, where you are helping saving lives and helping this entire community. And I hope at the age of eighty-eight that I look as good as you, as active as you are. I'm not sure I'll be able to learn five languages by then, but be able to give back. And so before we present this to you, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Jack Weiss, to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Vinyas, when I just looked over at you and I saw you smiling, I want everyone who works in my office, if you see Mr. Vinyas smiling, you see Fortuna's smile in there? Totally see Fortuna's smile in you. And among the great, many great things that you've done that Ms. Gruel mentioned, you know, you must be an extraordinary person because your daughter, Fortuna, is just one of the most beloved and wonderful people in the city. Congratulations to you.
No, you're going to get the last word, but not yet. We'd like to ask Captain Buck from the North Hollywood Division to say a few words.
Larry Bermudez, as a commanding officer in North Hollywood, you always look for community members to come in and support and come in and help you, but when Larry, when I got there, Larry was already there, and I've only been there a year, and he is an absolute, he's the epitome of our community police partnership. He works just tirelessly back there and gives and gives and gives, always has a smile, and he's so much fun, and having him in North Hollywood, we always say we wish we could have twenty more because, you know, he's not getting paid. He comes in, volunteers, and works just endlessly. And I just have to say on behalf of my folks that work with him and detectives, he works so hard, and I want to thank you again, Larry. We thank you every day, but this opportunity right here to thank you for all you do.
You're her super boss.
No, I don't know about that, but thank you, Gary. I don't know about that.
I don't know if you all heard that, but he did call her his super boss, so she is a great captain in North Hollywood. And so it really gives me great pleasure to present this to you and Jack to join me. Larry, for your years of services and filled by the entire city council, the city attorney, the mayor, to recognize you for all of your years of service and what an incredible person you are and what you've given back to the city and to the Los Angeles Police Department.
Thank you.
Join me in recognizing Larry Bermudez. You can say a few words. Go ahead, just a few. She's bossy to us, too, just so you know, okay?
No. See, now eighty-eight years old, she's going to say my daughter, "Daw Papa." Well, I want to thank the primary, all the captain and detectives, they helped me be what I am. They are a bunch of super nice people. It's like a family to me. In the last twenty years, I never had any better life than when I meet those people. I really enjoy it. They're hard-working people, and they are kind. The captain, brother. That's all right. Yeah, I love it. That's all right. Detective, this is the detective tree, which means boss. Martin. And... Say a few words.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much for being here, and I thank my kids for being with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Gruel, I just want to say what a wonderful way, most of the people, just to let you know, protocol-wise, always address the chair, but you addressed the people who really loved you, which was so special. And I know your daughter is so proud of you because I know it's so important, and for her and all of your family that's here and for North Hollywood Police. I can't tell you, as we honored Mike Hillman earlier there, we've done this before, when people volunteer and get involved with the city, it brings great love and makes things happen in the right way. You're an outstanding symbol of what's good about Los Angeles, so I thank you and congratulate you, and thank Ms. Gruel and Mr. Weiss for honoring, and always Captain Buck for this. This is what, I hope someone listens to this out there and know that the doors are open at the LAPD to have people come in and contribute like you have done. Congratulations, sir, to your family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final presentation is by Mr. Labange from the Fourth Council District. Mr. Labange.
Follow the captain. Follow the captain. No, I follow you. Family, it is. Thank you. Very much for your high praise. That's very good. That's very special. Most people don't do that. That's sort of just his love. Good job, detective.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. You bet. Thank you for asking.
Central traffic.
All good. Hyperion. All right. Yeah, do something speed on Hyperion. Thank you very much. Good morning again, Mr. President. I have a special presentation here to Ms. Talmitch Reagan, who is with Women in Theater. Women in Theater is an important organization celebrating their fifth anniversary. We have this certificate to commemorate them for the anniversary, not only of theirs, but also the anniversary of empowering theater and arts professionals through performance of education, networking, service, and outreach to the various programs that they have done. My very own Lisa Dickens, who some of you may know, was involved and still involved with Women in Theater. She had a call today for an audition, which is very good, but she wanted us to recognize you and encourage all Angelinos to celebrate and promote the arts and the culture of our nation. As we just spoke about, a great volunteer, arts are real important to get involved in, and especially in the diversity of Los Angeles, find a way to make it to a stage, to make it to sing, to make it to dance, to make it part of the humanities, which makes us all better people. So Talmitch, on behalf of the Mayor Antonio Vera-Gozza and myself, we present this commendation and congratulations to you. Let's give Women in Theater a big hand. You want to say something?
Yeah, I would like to say something because the arts are so very important to our community. Women in Theater was founded in nineteen seventy-eight to empower women and have a positive image of women. And since then, we incorporate so much service in the community with our programs. We go caroling to nursing homes. We take underprivileged children to theater. We have a new scholarship fund for graduating female seniors who want to continue their education and go to college. We are, we have been involved for thirty years. We're celebrating our fifth annual Red Carpet Awards Ceremony, honoring live performance tomorrow at the Castaway. So this certificate is very important, and I will be so pleased to announce it to the people in attendance who are being honored. Thank you so much.
And Talmitch, before you go there, Mr. President, with your permission, if I could, because she's going to represent us tomorrow, raise your hand, your honorary deputy of the Fourth District, to present this to everybody tomorrow night at the Castaways.
Thank you.
Okay, good job.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. We'll return to the items called special. Just before we take public comment, I know we have some family members here on a very important item. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Alarcon for item nineteen. If we could please take that up first.
Actually, members, I'd like to call up the family of Joseph Wickman, who was killed on October ninth, one year ago. The Police Department has requested a reward of fifty thousand dollars. This is a case where we actually have the vehicle that struck Joseph and threw him and took him four blocks. This accident occurred in front of the mother's house. She actually heard the accident, and it's the saddest thing to think that not only did it occur right in front of their home, but that the perpetrator has not had the courage to step forward and meet his fate. So with that, I'd just like to turn it over to public comment and have the family talk about their brother, their cousin, their son.
Thank you. My name is Julie Wickman-Wearton, and on October ninth, two thousand and seven, my brother was killed in a hit-and-run accident in front of my mother's house. My brother was left to die in the street, his injury so catastrophic that he was pronounced in the street. These people left him there and fled. Somebody knows something about this. Somebody saw something. These people talked to somebody. There are people out there that know what happened to them, and we really do need them to come forward. We are so grateful to Councilman Alarcon for introducing a motion with the support of Councilman Cardeness for a fifty thousand dollar reward to encourage those who are maybe on the fence, who know something, who aren't sure where to go, to provide this information for this. Detective Bustos and Officer Tally of the LAPD have been working this case and are asking for help. They've valiantly worked for the past year to provide as many leads as possible, but they're asking for our help. On behalf of my family, I humbly request the rest of you, please support your colleagues, Alarcon and Councilman Cardeness in voting for this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Valerie Martinez, Alarcon?
Yes, my name is Joe Lozano, and I'm in District Seven. I'd like to thank the council at large for the fifty thousand dollar reward and Richard Alarcon, because it's something that is being needed, and it's been a year. And as I've said before, dogs are left lying in the street, not human beings, you know, and this is what happened to my nephew. He was left out in the street, dead. Nobody cared, nobody, nothing. And I'd also like to thank the councilman for the streetlight that he's putting up on Arlita and Brand on November. That's our deadline. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Other family members? I know we have Valerie Martinez and Michael Duarte. Alarcon?
Hi, I'm Valerie. I'm sixteen, and I'm one of the cousins of Joseph Wickman. The tragedy that my family has underwent is extreme. Me personally, I've never felt this type of pain of losing a cousin, someone who was a part of my family. The thing that gets me the most is that I never thought that this would happen to me or to my family, and the thing is that it can happen to anyone, and that's why we are so desperate for everyone's help in this case. The person responsible has no idea what my family has been through in the past year. It is a dream, almost. It's a nightmare, everything that we have gone through, and we're very grateful that this reward has finally, you know, underwent for my cousin because he did not deserve this, and the sad part is it will happen again to somebody else, and I think that we need to put a stop to it, and we all need to help each other out to make sure that this doesn't continue. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michael Duarte, and I'm a cousin of Joe Wickman. I want to thank everyone here for giving us this time, and especially Councilman Alarcon and Cardeness with his help. Joseph was more than just a cousin. He was, I'm a musician and a business, small business owner, and he helped me considerably with regards to the business that I take care of. He affected many, many lives. At his funeral, we had over three hundred fifty people show up. That was a very, very, very tragic loss in our family, and we are just asking for this plea that if anybody knows somebody for this vehicle, they know the owner, they know somebody who members, we please have them come out and help us with this closure in their life. I want to thank again, thank everybody on behalf of this family for your support in this, and we hope that this will bring closure to everybody and that this will never, ever happen to anyone else in the City of Los Angeles again. Thank you.
In closing, I'd like to say that people ask all the time what their council people do for them, what their city does for him. This is an example. Councilman, your staff makes magic happen, and we are so very grateful. We would just like to have some closure, and we appreciate all your efforts.
Mr. Alarcon?
Members, I would like to point out that you might recognize Joe Lozano. He's been in this chambers quite often, and anybody from the northeast San Fernando Valley who's anywhere near being an elected official knows Joe Lozano because he is a community activist, he is an outspoken person, and as I said in the press conference, we don't always agree, but I will tell you this, as I said in the press conference, this is a family that cares. This is a family that is very active in the community. You'll see another police officer who isn't one of the detectives, and that is a member of their family. So I can tell you that if this happened to your child, I guarantee you that this family would step forward and not worry about any repercussions, even if it were a friend of theirs who were the perpetrator, because that's the kind of family it is. And so they are asking that somebody who knows information about this particular perpetrator, please get in touch with the LAPD. So finally, I'd like to give the phone number. Contact Detective Tally, that is the woman in uniform there, at eight seven seven lawful. That's eight... about this particular perpetrator, please get in touch with the LAPD. So finally, I'd like to, uh, give the phone number. Contact Detective Tally. Uh, that is, uh, the woman, uh, in uniform there. Um, at 877-LAWFULL. That's 877-L-A-W-F-U-L-L. This family does deserve closure to this part of their tragedy. Um, though it won't, it won't make you whole with regard to the loss of Joseph, but, um, it will at least let you know that our justice system works, uh, and who did it, and perhaps knowing why it happened. Um, so with that, I urge your support of this motion for $50,000 reward, for $50,000.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon, and thank you to the entire family for taking the time to be here. We will take the vote on this motion that is before us. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
As approved unanimously, and we'll send that forthwith to the mayor for his signature without objection. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll go to our, our general public comment now, and, uh, we'll thank members of the, for the general public comment for their understanding. Um, Arnold Sacks is our first speaker. After that will be Michael Carrion.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Thank you for holding my time while I walk up here again. Um, at last council meeting on Wednesday, I was chastised for going off topic when I brought up some comments regarding, um, graffiti. Now, I understand that the fact that a company is illegally using the city logo isn't as important as staying on, on topic for the graffiti abatement program. But I tried to take my cue from the city council actions. So you, Mr. President, mentioned, you clarified for me that explain the rules and procedures, but I must have missed it. I'm hoping that you could again clarify for me the actions taken on September 10th regarding the Trade Commerce and Tourism Committee Report relative to the proposal with the L.A. Land Company Incorporated for, and I use this word exclusive, that I'm reading from the council actions, signage rights for the exterior of the Los Angeles Convention Center. When that item appeared before the city council, there was no mention of the L.A. Land Arena Land Company whatsoever by any council member that discussed it. There was plenty of mention about AEG, which there's nowhere to, it appears nowhere on this action, not on the front page, not on the back page, not on the sides. The only place it may appear is if it's used in invisible ink. So by staying on topic, which is a contract between the L.A. Land Arena Land, L.A. Arena Land Company and the city, an exclusive contract, please explain to me how the subject can be moved to a contract between the city and AEG. There's no mention, not on point, yet it's authorized and it's allowed by, by the city and the city attorney.
We'll see if we can get you that information. Thank you very much. Michael Carrion is our next speaker.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I'd like to thank Mr. Gruhl, Rosenthal, and Zine for being here on time. Once again, the councilman from my district walks in at 10:35. You were here two minutes late, Mr. Smith, but you were good. Mr. Weisar was here at 10:35. It's a wonder why his information is all wrong. Last, a couple days ago, he told you that I spend over 20 hours a week with his office. That would be four hours a day. If anyone spent four hours a day with his constituents, I'd be very upset. So I don't know where Mr. Weisar's getting his information from, but he's wrong, once again. Either he's lying to us or staff members are giving him the wrong information. Okay? All I've ever asked for was to have an open-door communication and for some things to get done in our community, and they're not. His staff member feels that she's going to run things her way, and since they've lost the other staff member, they haven't. So I go on to ask myself, where are we going with this? If you do the math, you'll understand that I am here when I'm tired and fed up with trying to work with Mr. Weisar's office and not getting anything done. I've asked for Mr. Weisar, I've asked his staff. If he picks up the phone and calls me, we can communicate. Yet that phone is too heavy. He's never picked up the phone, and we don't communicate. So I will show up until we do that. We will get a line of communication open if it's in public comment or in private. That choice is up to Mr. Weisar. Okay? I am not afraid to come here. I am tired of coming here. I don't like to come here, but I will not stop. We are not getting represented in my community, and I will be outspoken from my community. Like I said before, Zuma Dog should be working for your office. He seems to show up at our functions. None of your staff even shows up. You were supposed to, excuse me, Mr. Weisar was supposed to, but he didn't. Again, Zuma Dog for Council District 14.
Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. And, uh, Mr. Carrion, I've always, uh, talked to you. I've always told you that I'm available to you here on the side of the pew. The fact that you come up into a public spectacle every week is more a reflection of you and your own personal dealings and not a reflection of my staff or how my staff function. So I welcome you every time to express your First Amendment right, but that's more a reflection of what you want to accomplish here and get some TV time on Channel 35.
Our next speaker is Zuma Dog. Is Zuma Dog here? Does not seem to be here, Matt Dowd. Sir, we, we have a policy to not block anyone's views or to put, uh, placards up, so I'd ask you if you could put that to the side, please.
I won't block anyone's view, but I'm being charged for this by the city of Los Angeles, a criminal complaint, wasting taxpayers' money, and here's why it's under the jurisdiction.
You've shown it as a piece. We can now take it aside consistent with the policy.
The officer from LAPD can put the Hannah Montana thing down.
He's, he's doing it with very nice kid gloves, don't we?
Thank you. And it's not funny, though, because here's who I am. I'm Matthew Dowd. I'm on a civil, a federal lawsuit. In fact, it's a civil case against the city of Los Angeles. Here's my attorney, he just filed these. This is his declaration. He's Steve Rhodey, Rhodey Victor of $500 an hour Declaration in Support of Our Motion for Summary Judgment. You know, $500 an hour mega attorney says, you know, "I provided extensive points and authorities in writing in support of our position that the ordinance in question were unconstitutional." Your guy, you sniveling little brat, Michael Nagel, and, you know, wait for the... Come on, Dion, give me the, you know, I'm talking about his performance. I think it's sniveling. Because he sat here and snivelled to Janice Hahn that Shea Bud is not protected.
He's getting into personal, um, matters. Sir, if you could please stick to the policy and legal matters before us. Thank you.
Okay. So anyway, the, the, November 10th, the city's filing against us, too. So anyway, we've got a, a political rally because we're activists now because of the city of Los Angeles. Casa Princesa. It's nice to be on TV and say hello to all the people at the function tonight, Mayor Sam. All the big political people are starting to get behind us now. I'm going to play guitar. It's up on YouTube, Deep South 81, and it's all part of the attraction at the political Zuma Dog rally. Unfortunately, he's not here, so I'm going to give the plug for him anyway because, uh, I know he would have. But yeah, it's not funny, Hannah Montana. This is going to be the, the, you know...
I'm coming. Thank you for that. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your general public comment. That will close general public comment. If we can return to the items called special, please.
Item number seven was called special. There are cards on this.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sacks, on item number seven. Would you like to come forward? And then, uh, Matt Dowd will follow.
Uh, thank you very much again for holding my time. I thought we were allowed two minutes, Mr. President. No, I have a minute forty, forty, 54 seconds. But I'd also like to thank Councilman Parks for his insane action, um, brought by, bringing forth a change to the L.A. Marathon because, um, four representatives from some local, um, churches claim that it interferes with their opportunity to hold services. So for 25,000 participants have had the date of the marathon changed to a holiday, which is when they run the Boston Marathon. They run the Boston Marathon on a holiday, Patriots Day, which is only celebrated in Massachusetts. But anyway, be that as it may, since we are concerned about religious activities on Sundays, any special event that's held on a Sunday is due to interfere with somebody's opportunity to go to church or a Saturday on somebody's opportunity to go to a synagogue or a Friday when somebody has an opportunity to go to a mosque. So we need to curtail these special events held on those days. Because as we've seen, the ability of four churches, never mind the fact that Frank McCourt is behind the corporation that bought the L.A. Marathon, and he has a little bit of pull on the city, let's say. Never mind that, but we have four religious leaders come before the city council and say, "Well, gee, this is interfering with our congregation. We need to change the date." By the way, how much more would it cost for the MTA to run service on that Monday instead of the usual Sunday that they do for the L.A. Marathon?
Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
Thank you. First of all, uh, this guitar doesn't have constitutional protection, but when I play it, it does. Think about that. Special event fee waivers. Let me get stuck in before I get reprimanded by the council president. I'm just going to skip straight to number, letter, sorry, letter P. The, uh, in fact, you know what? Letter O, letter O. The Tinkerbell premiere on October 19th. Tinkerbell, one of my favorite characters. But look, see, this one would have gone through, and the city would have paid for this if it wasn't for the Zuma Dog activism on the Jack Weiss memo to get these commercial events to reimburse the city. And here's one that's being reimbursed. So I'm happy about that. But then I go down to item Q. Weiss-Rosenthal. Item Q on the, uh, on the special event fee waiver. We're declaring the X1V grand opening. So I'd imagine that's 14. The 14th grand opening. First of all, how many grand openings can you have? You're meant to only have one. So how come we're up to number 14? And then the grand opening of what? It doesn't even say Jack Weiss. But you know what? He's probably too embarrassed to put it up here. But the, the event sponsor is reimbursing the city anyway. So he's just keeping it quiet, buddy. They're reimbursing, but I'm going to keep my eye on this because I want to know how many, what kind of event has 14 grand openings, except some kind of hooker on Vegas Strip?
Sir, if you could please not try to be disruptive.
It's a expression protected by the First Amendment.
It is protected, but I can point out that there are children others who watch that, so please try to be as respectful as you can. With that, we will close the public comment. Please open the roll. Do you have a card, Mr. Dog? No, no. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. That is approved. Next item, please, called special.
Next is, next is item number 21, and there's a card on this item.
Do we have 20 called special for Mr. Zine?
I'm sorry, item 20.
Okay, Mr. Zine.
And that was called special by Mr. Zine.
Item number 20. I believe it's called special for you. We have 20 and 23 together. Um, this is the Prop 5 items. We do have, uh, cards on 23. So if we take those up together, do you want to take the cards first? Yep, Mr. Cardenas, okay. So, uh, we have Margaret Dooley-Samueli or Samuli. Excuse me. You put it, you actually spelled it out there for, for me. I don't know if that means Samuel I or Samu, Samuli. Samuli, that's what I thought, okay. Margaret Dooley-Samuli, thank you. And then, uh, we'll hear next from Michael Acaprio-Lightner. Good morning, again.
Good morning. Thank you. Uh, my name is Margaret Dooley-Samuli. I'm with the Yes on 5 campaign. Uh, Proposition 5 will expand access to drug treatment for young people and nonviolent offenders. It will also make rehabilitation a priority of the prison system again. It hasn't been for two decades. The nonpartisan legislative analyst calculates that Prop 5 will cost, will be cost-neutral on an annual basis by shifting $1 billion in reduced prison and parole costs to rehabilitation programs proven to reduce recidivism. By safely reducing the prison population over several years, California saves another $2.5 billion in forgone prison construction costs. Prop 5 is supported by the League of Women Voters of California, the California Society of Addiction Medicine, the California Nurses Association, the California Federation of Teachers, California Academy of Family Physicians, and the Consumer Federation of California, among many, many others. Opponents of, to Prop 5 are sadly mischaracterizing this important reform measure, using inflammatory rhetoric like "escape" and "get out of jail free" that simply ignores the reality of Prop 5's provisions. Prop 5 does give judges the power to determine if and/or how to intervene in cases of nonviolent offenders with drug problems, case by case. Prop 5 strikes the proper balance between treatment access and public safety. That's why Prop 5 is supported by Jean Woodford, former, uh, director of the California Department of Corrections and Warden of San Quentin for, uh, 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 former Warden of San Quentin, George Galaza, retired warden, sitting Orange County Superior Court Judge Jim Gray, um, and many others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have, as our next speaker, Michael Acaprio-Lightner. After that will be Barbara Spilly.
Good morning, President Garcetti and distinguished members of the city council. My name is Michael Acaprio-Lightner. I'm an individual on long-term recovery. I'm a member of the aware, and I'm an alumni graduate of Tarzana Treatment Centers. I'm here to speak before you and ask for your yes endorsement on Proposition 5, the Nonviolent Offenders Rehabilitation Act, or NORA. In my statements that I made here this past Tuesday, I mentioned my 22-year prior, uh, multi-prison term history that would, by all accounts, label me as a career criminal and a failure to society. My first commitment was in July of 1986 for possession of $50 worth of crack cocaine. I went on to serve nine additional terms. Seven of them were for drug offenses. It wasn't until, uh, I was allowed and allotted the opportunity under the Senate Bill 1453 that I was able to turn my life around, or at least to take the beginning steps to do so. Today, uh, my treatment does work. I believe that it does work. I have, uh, two years, five months, and 11 days, clean and sober. And after 22 years of being a problem to society, I was able to discharge D-34623 and become a productive member of society. Today, today I am a volunteer for Operation Gratitude that packages and sends our troops gift boxes to, uh, which I coordinate a letter-writing campaign. And tomorrow, the volunteers at Tarzana Treatment Center will be delivering nearly 1,500 letters and pictures that last week took us 12 hours to compile in a marathon event. I am a, uh, DSHR, nationally certified[1679.61] I'm a DSHR, nationally certified, as the instructor for the Department of Homeland Security to serve in times of crisis. And I am also on the American Red Cross Disaster Action Team. Some of my accomplishments involve working with police officers and sheriff deputies today, going back to the very same prison that I paroled from and speaking with the men there. And I wanna thank you and I ask that you support Prop 5.
Thank you. Barbara Spilly is our next speaker. After that is Michael Carrion.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Spilly and I work for Tarzana Treatment Center. I also am an alumni of that program. I will have 20 years clean and sober on the 28th of this month due to treatment. I started using drugs at a very young age, being sent to Ventura's Gulf for Girls in 1966. I was 15 years old. I was sent there for incorrigibility. I used glue and smoked marijuana. I came out shooting heroin. Um, treatment gave me back my life. The puzzle of Prop 5, the addicts go in and out, in and out of jails and prisons, coming out with no coping skills, no living tools, nothing. And they continue to break laws. Um, they, they abuse our medical facilities. It's a puzzle. There's a lot of pieces to this. It's not, and the nonviolent offenders, why not put them in treatment? Why not allow them to become employable, become productive members of society and turn their lives around? Putting them in jail teaches them nothing. It's a warehouse. That's all it is. Please support Prop 5.
Our last speaker is Michael Carrion.
My name is Michael Carrion, and I also am a recovering addict and alcoholic. I just celebrated 12 years clean. And I say that because Proposition 5 is the tool that you need to get these people off the streets. We don't need to be warehoused. We don't need to be repressed. We need help. There's a lot of people out there suffering from a medical disease called addiction. But some people don't wanna see that. Some people wanna lock you up and throw you away, and that's it. Then we complain when you don't get rehabilitated in a state penitentiary and you come out and you commit more crimes and you get younger children to become criminals and to grow up and to become convicts, then you ask yourself, where did it go wrong? It goes wrong when you don't give children a chance. They don't need to be rehabilitated. Some of us need to be abilitated. We've never had an opportunity. Prop 5 is giving some people their first chance, not a second chance. I am alumni from Warm Springs. I went there 12 years ago. They gave me an opportunity to turn my life around, and today I work there. I see the miracle happen on a daily basis. Some people do not see that miracle, and if they do not deal with that miracle, then they're oblivious that it even happens. We only see what, what affects us personally. And addiction affects my life real close. I've lost many members, many family members and friends to alcohol and drugs. And if you keep repressing people, believe me, ladies and gentlemen, one day they will come out and they will explode, and then you will have to deal with the problem. You can deal with it now, or you can deal with it later. That choice is up to you. Stand up and be heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will, uh, close our general public comment on this. Mr. Zion and Mr. Cardness are our first two speakers, followed by Mr. Weiss and Mr. Wesson. Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. We discussed this matter a couple of days ago, and I don't think the attitude has changed from personal responsibility. We have drug treatment programs in the state of California. And some of those programs work and some of those programs don't work. The people who testified that have recovered, congratulations. There are many that have not recovered. And drug substance abuse affects a lot of people in society, there's no question about it. The concern on Measure 5 is that this is now is an excuse. We now have as an excuse for committing a crime, an excuse for domestic violence, an excuse for many of the criminal sections in the California codes. So the concern is, why would we modify the drug treatment programs to then make excuse for people's criminal behavior? These are adults who are committing these crimes. If someone's addicted to drugs, that's one issue, and there's programs to deal with that. We're talking about the situation now to take identity theft, for example, grand theft auto, for example, and use the excuse, "I'm under the influence of drugs," and now we're gonna wipe that out and we're gonna go through a drug treatment program. It may work, it may not work. So I'll sum that up real simple. What we can do now, if this measure passes, and I'm opposed to this along with many of my colleagues, we can do now is we can take the California Penal Code, we can take the California Penal Code and throw it in the trash can. We can take the California Vehicle Code and throw it in the trash can. We can take the California Business Professional Code and throw it in the trash can. We can take California Civil Code and throw it in the trash can. We can take the California Municipal Code and throw it in the trash can. We can just take the books and throw them away and let everyone say, "I'm under the influence of drugs and that's why I committed this crime." We know that many wobblers, many felonies are called wobblers. It can either go misdemeanor or felony. So many of those cases will be reduced to a misdemeanor, and then we find out the individual says they're under the influence of drugs, so we just wipe that out of the criminal record. People have to be held accountable and responsible for their actions. We currently have Prop 36. We currently have drug rehab programs. We can't make excuses for criminal behavior, spousal abuse, child abuse, grand theft auto, identity theft. What we're gonna do is open the door to have more criminal activity. Let's throw away all the laws if Measure 5 passes. I'm asking my colleagues not to support Measure 5. We had a family here who was asking for this reward for their loved one who was run over and killed by a hit-and-run driver. We have people come here all the time saying, "Crime in the neighborhoods." We can just throw all the laws away and legalize everything. That's not what the society is asking for. Measure 5 is the wrong way to go. We need to hold adults responsible for their behavior. If a child does something wrong, they get a timeout. If an adult does something wrong, there's consequences. And we're not talking about making a consequence an excuse, "I'm under the influence of drugs," because that's what Measure 5 does. It'll take, and the slippery slope will continue, we'll have more and more elimination of the laws. And clearly, there's a prison problem. There's an overcrowding problem. I don't deny that. But there's also a criminal element in our society that preys on innocent victims. We have a responsibility for those innocent victims. We have those innocent victims who turn to us and say, "How are you gonna protect us?" We're trying to boost the police department to 10,000 officers. Why do we need to do that? Why do we need to add more police officers? Why don't we just throw the books away and let this city turn into a state, a city of anarchy? Because what we're doing is opening the door to that. The DA's against it, the chief of police is against it, all law enforcement's against it. It's against common sense, it's against reasonableness. And I'd like to call, uh, Commander Gannon, full of from the Los Angeles Police Department on this matter, to give the perspective of the police department and how this will affect operations within the Los Angeles Police Department. Chief Beck was here a couple of days ago, and I understand you're here today representing the department on this matter.
Yes, Chief Beck is tied up on another issue for the chief of police, he asked me to be here.
If you could give the comments from the Los Angeles Police Department on this matter, and also Police Commission, their position on this.
Yes. I'm Commander Pat Gannon from Los Angeles Police Department Detective Bureau. Now, the chief of police opposes Prop 5. Very short and brief, diversion is currently available for individuals arrested for narcotics offenses. Currently, these individuals have three bites at the apple, and essentially that should be enough. Uh, adding to these numbers of chances to a person has to avoid, you know, it just doesn't make sense that you continue to add the number of times that a person is given a chance. I think that when you look at it, essentially, all of us want people to get better. We want them to deal with their addictions. And we want people to seek treatment. However, from my own personal experience with my immediate family and my experience with 30 years of law enforcement, people tend not to seek it on their own. They have to be encouraged. We've made much success as Los Angeles, in Los Angeles, to reduce crime in the last six years. People need to be held accountable for their actions. When that is accomplished, individuals have a greater incentive to seek out professional help. And, and I believe that's the, the bottom line here. We want people to seek out professional help. However, my experience has been they won't do it on their own unless encouraged, and being threatened with jail time definitely puts somebody in that position to seek that out. The treatments are available, they just need to find them and use them.
But the, the question of drug addiction and treatment for drug addiction, and Measure 5 talks about criminal activity, committing a criminal activity other than a drug offense, and then utilizing that drug influence, that drug habit as an excuse for the crime they committed.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, there, there must be 35, 40 crimes on that sheet that I saw that, that would ultimately be eligible for, uh, diversion again, and again, and again, and again. Those particular, I don't, I don't think you can minimize those crimes. You can't minimize the impact that any of those kinds, whether it's identity theft or whether it's the burglarizing of somebody's automobile, or whether it's burglary in it, in itself. Those are all issues that need to be dealt with, and not necessarily on just a drug issue. I think currently, um, there are ways of dealing with those issues. And, and I think the courts have been very accommodating for people to, to get that help on their, on their own. If you, um, in, in my, my opinion, you have to be held responsible for your actions. And if you wanna get help on your own, then get it. But if you, if you don't, you have to be held accountable.
If someone who's arrested for a drug offense, a straight drug offense, first-time offender, are there programs that they can divert from the criminal justice system?
Absolutely. And if they fail to, to complete that appropriately, they'll give them a, a second chance. And if they fail to, to do that appropriately and fail to complete the program, they'll give them a third, a third chance. Uh, we see that repeatedly on many of our arrests.
On a drug offense, now someone who's committing domestic violence, someone who's committing identity theft, someone who's stealing vehicles, or someone who's committing any of these other crimes, that could be a wobbler felony misdemeanor, they go through the criminal sanction, and then if they have a drug problem, they can seek treatment for that.
Yes.
And this will then eliminate the drug, this will eliminate the criminal prosecution and simply send them to some type of drug rehab.
That's correct.
So they will be held, they will not be held accountable, they will find an excuse, and a person would be then wise to say they have a drug addiction to then excuse the activity which was the criminal behavior.
That's correct. It gives them more opportunities or chances, but in the meantime, we, we continually have more victims, and, and that's what we're trying to reduce. Reducing the number of victims, reducing the number of crimes that we have in the city.
And that's our responsibility as a law enforcement agency and as a municipality to protect people from crime.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardness is our next speaker. Mr. Cardness.
Thank you very much. I wish I had a bunch of dollar bills, so I can be dramatic and show us that the state of California is throwing away the vast majority of $10 billion for our incarceration system in California, to the tune of $46,000, to the tune of $46,000 to incarcerate an adult for 12 months, to the tune of $252,000 a year to incarcerate a juvenile, even if that person perhaps should be better off in a drug rehabilitation program at perhaps to the tune of a couple of thousands of dollars, maybe even $10,000 or $20,000, and actually stop committing crimes when they get off drugs. One of the things that I wanna point out is that it's unfortunate that too many people talk about Proposition 5 about violent criminals, violent criminals, violent criminals. First of all, Proposition 5 is about nonviolent offenders, okay? It's about nonviolent offenders. And the codes decide what is a violent crime and a nonviolent crime already. But what Proposition 5 is actually trying to do is trying to get the state of California and the voters to understand, if you really want safer neighborhoods, we have to start being a society that gets on the root of the problem, not a society that says, "I'm puffing out my chest and I'm gonna show you, Mr. or Mrs. Criminal, at the age of 14, or 15, or 20, or 30, I'm gonna show you that I am going to spend $46,000 to put you behind bars. I'm gonna spend $252,000 to send you, little 14-year-old, and put you behind bars because you committed a nonviolent crime." And then when you get out, you probably had a lot more education about how to get drugs without getting caught. You had more education about how to do drugs, and perhaps higher-level drugs, when you were in prison. And then when you get out of prison, you're probably going to want to feed that habit, so you're gonna break into a vehicle, you're gonna steal somebody's purse, or you're gonna get into your mother's purse, or you're gonna be at a friend's house and you're gonna get into their purse, or what have you, and you're gonna commit more and more crimes, probably a dozen or two hu, two dozen times, maybe even 100 times, before you actually get caught. And then we're gonna put you on the revolving door and then put you back in jail. That is not handling the problem. The United States of America prides itself on being a second-chance country. And with all due respect to Mr. Gannon, you're absolutely right. We already have some second-chance protocols, or maybe even third-chance protocols within our system. But one of the things that we have moved toward, as, as a society that is run by legislation and checks and balances, is that over the last few decades, we have puffed out our chests and we have told judges, "We're gonna take the discretion out of your hands, and we are going to force you to say, regardless of what you think about the individual situation of the person before you, that you're gonna decide what their sentence is gonna be, we're not giving you a choice. You're gonna put that person in jail." Or you don't have 10 options, you don't have three options, you have two options. That is a phenomenon that has been occurring across the country, and California is more aggressive than any state in the country when it comes to that punitive-type system. And again, that punitive-type system has not grown to the point that when I was the budget chairman in the state legislature, we were sending $5 billion to the Department of Corrections in order to deal with the problem in the way that we've been dealing it for decades. Well, the governor just signed a budget, and in that budget, the governor committed, and the legislature, $10 billion. That's in eight years, we have doubled the amount of money we're sending to prisons to lock people up. But I can tell you this, in those same eight, 10, eight years, we have kept the rehabilitation funding for drug rehab and other kinds of rehab for our constituents, 40 million people in California, to less than $250 million. It has stayed stagnant. That's what Proposition 5 is about. Proposition 5 is about doing something that makes sense, handling the problem on the front end, and not being dramatic about it. Not just talking about how to be tough. And with all due respect to our police department and the Police Protective League and all the sheriffs and all the other people in the DA, this Proposition 5 does not take one penny away from your funding. Not one penny. And I would hope that somebody would push their button and, and have somebody please contradict that, if that's the truth. But the way I read this proposition, the funding of the department that we have, the police department, the city of Los Angeles, is funded by the General Fund of the City of Los Angeles, not by the General Fund of the Legislature. The legislative general fund funds incarceration, it funds or does not fund rehabilitation programs, et cetera. So the fact of the matter is, please, Angelinos, don't think that if Proposition 5 passes that we're gonna have less officers on the street. We already put in motion all the things that we have to do as the city of Los Angeles to get to 10,000 officers, and we're now, according to the police department, 400 officers short, and we are on our way to getting our 10,000 officers. Proposition 5 will not diminish that effort one bit whatsoever. So you'll have every officer that we've promised you, you have the officers of today and more officers tomorrow. So the fact of the matter is, Proposition 5 will not reduce your police force, Proposition 5 will not increase crime in California, and I'll push my button again to speak some more.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss is next.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And, and I, I wanna say again what I said the other day, which is that I think, um, there are folks, such as Mr. Cardness, such as the folks, the, the, sort of the intellectual brains behind this proposal, who are well-meaning and sincere and who really wanna do something about, uh, the drug scourge in our communities. And that is exactly where you are coming from, Mr. Cardness, and I, and I understand that, and I respect that. I do believe, as I said the other day, that this is the ultimate unfunded mandate. Because I, I've never used the line about cops going away, but, but I, but, but I wouldn't, but, but it's possibility. Um, because these are new programs that will need new dollars, that will have to come from somewhere, and I don't see how, um, in October or November of 2008, why is, why is this month and this year different from all others? Because every level of government is hurting more than ever. We can look at the trend lines in the future and predict we're all gonna be hurting more than ever, and I, um, and, and I just don't feel comfortable imposing this type of a burden on the taxpayers in this way. That's what we have legislatures for. That's what we have councils for. That's what we have legislative bodies for. That's what we have legislative debates for and legislative process. We routinely change the character of our state in fundamental ways with a meat cleaver every time we have a statewide election. And I think it is a terrible way to run this state, and we, we see the, we see the remnants of that in the problems we have in Sacramento today. So for that reason, and for some of the other reasons, I'm, I, for, for reasons related to my career trajectory, I don't condone throwing the municipal code in the trash can. But, uh, but maybe there's a point underlying there. Uh, I, I do hope we vote no on this as a body.
Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President and members, and I wanna thank Mr. Weiss for not, uh, using his trash can as a prop, because I might've felt compelled to use my trash can as a prop, and it's, it's full, and it's very dirty. You know, everyone, and members, you know, I don't speak all the time, but everyone in this horseshoe knows somebody that has a problem with some drug or alcohol. And I wanna say that individuals that have substance abuse problems, for the most part, are not criminals. It is the drug within their body that is the criminal, and it is the one that is forcing the body to actually... to actually do the crime. Now, I don't have a problem in giving people 100 chances to turn their life around. It doesn't matter how many times you fall down. What matters is how many times you get up. And I agree with a lot of what Mr. Cardenas says. And if I could, I wouldn't have a problem in saying no to my dear friend to my left, Dennis Zine, my seatmate to my left. And I'd have no problem in saying no to Mr. Weiss, my seatmate to the right, and to the police department. And I'd have no problems in going against the Los Angeles Police Protective League. You know, I don't believe, I don't think that if this measure passes that this city, this state, will go to Hades. But the operative words that I used was, "I don't think." "I don't believe." And what happens in Sacramento is sometimes you work very hard, you put together a piece of legislation, and you pass it. And then there's some unintended consequences. Give you a quick example. Just recently, we passed a bill where if you're in your car, you have to have Bluetooth or some kind of device where you can't use your cellphone. Joseph Mitty, and I worked with him, he tried to pass this thing for three times. He finally gets it passed, and all of a sudden, they find out it was an unintended consequence. And that consequence was, it didn't cover people that were text messaging. So he then had to come back and do what we call cleanup legislation that then included text messaging. I have no problem in gambling, no problem in experimenting on a yes of Prop 5. No problem, because that's what makes this country great. We invent things. We experiment. We take things, we make them better. But one problem, two lines in this bill, I cannot support it. It would require a four-fifth vote of the legislature to change this or to modify this. Like I said, maybe Mr. Zine is right. I don't think so. Maybe the chief is right. Maybe the Police Protective League is right. I don't think so. But suppose they are. Suppose they are, and the legislature has the responsibility to go in and make this change. Now, again, I agree with my dear friend, Mr. Cardenas. I served with him. I served with Richard Alacon. But there's one difference. For 15 minutes, members, I was Speaker at the California State Assembly. And for 15 minutes, I was responsible for getting budgets passed. And I'm telling you, it is virtually impossible to get a two-thirds vote. I know. The other party would get upset with me and refuse to vote just because they didn't like what color shirt I wore that day. Democrats would not support Republican legislation because it was Republican legislation. And vice versa. To require a four-fifth vote, which means you have to get 64 members of the State Assembly to vote on it, is bad policy. Now, I support this. I support the concept. Let us do it right. Let us do it. We shouldn't have a poison pill in here just because they're afraid of the muscle from the police unions. I, in Sacramento, I had the unions with me, police unions and law enforcement, and I won. I had them against me, and I won. And they don't stop me on the street because they want revenge or anything like that. They can be dealt with. They can be, they can, you can negotiate with them. The point I'm trying to make, based on experience that no one else has in this room, is that four-fifths vote, 64 votes, is an impossibility. Now, maybe this body is the only body that I've served on where we could do a four-fifths vote. But I tell you, in the state legislature, it is an impossibility. So, Michael, I have the highest respect for you, and I love you, and I'm with you. But this, that two sentences, in my view, killed, I cannot put that burden on the next speaker in the next pro tem. I just can't. Members, I think for policy purposes, it would be a big mistake for us to vote to handcuff our colleagues in the North. And I appreciate you affording me a few minutes to go over, Mr. President.
Always, Mr. Speaker. Our pleasure. Ms. Grul is our next speaker. Mr. Alacon. Then we have Mr. Zine and Mr. Cardenas for a second time right now. Ms. Grul.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Westen. And I think you and Mr. Weiss put it very well. When you look at Proposition 5, it has some admirable goals. And sometimes the devil is in the details with that. And I think one of the biggest complaints we've had with the state legislature is the fact that we are doing ballot initiatives, which really should be things that are talked about in the state legislature. So there's that debate and discussion about what needs to go forward. And I think there is concern. And I agree with Mr. Cardenas in the fact that, you know, sometimes you can spend a lot of money incarcerating people. But at the same time, if you spent the same amount of money, providing them with, or less, with education programs that would work, et cetera. But I think that in this instance, it is ballot box budgeting and legislating which is going to hamstring. And I think we all agree with the overarching concept of trying to get people into programs that need that kind of help. But on the other hand, I think we do not want it to be seen as a way in which to get out of some of the problems they may be in and things that they have done. And so I believe, when we look at LA County alone, and we look at the unfunded mandates our state has ever, has imposed upon itself, we're looking at about 28,000 additional defendants and about 550,000 additional court appearances each year. And I think that there are, again, a place for treatment programs to exist. But we also want to make sure that it is a system that deals with those that are criminals as well. And so I support, as Mr. Westen, I think so, articulately put, which was, three-quarters is a very difficult thing to do. It's not so hard here in this council chambers. But it is hard on most days. But it is hard in the state legislature. And I think that although Prop 5 has some parts of it that are admirable, we believe that this item should not be, you know, budgeting by the ballot box and legislating by the ballot box, but in fact, being able to have that discussion in the state legislature. So I also rise to oppose Proposition 5 today.
Mr. Alacon is next.
I very rarely stand up to oppose something my former speaker said. But I don't believe that the Republicans ever voted against anything because of your shirt. They were envious of your shirt, if anything. In all seriousness, this, the fact of the matter is that we've come to a time when legislative bodies are hampered in the work that they were designed to do under our democratic form of government. And it is absolutely true that the legislature should do this kind of legislating. But the fact of the matter is, they will never do this kind of legislating because they have been hampered by a system that allows the minority to control in many cases. This is not a measure that the legislature is deciding, however. This is a measure that is being decided by the voters. And let's not move away from the issue and talk about process and policy. No. The issue is whether or not you support funding, not just talking about it, but whether or not you support funding for rehabilitating people who have been nonviolent offenders. That's what it's about. Now, the first thing that it says in the police manual, and I've said this many times, is our mission is not to solve the social ills of society. That's in the police manual. And what that means is, the police department's job is to enforce the law, and we have empowered them to do that, and we continue to do so. But it is not their job to solve the social ills of society. That is the job of the people. And we are presenting a measure to them to give them an opportunity to say, "We've had enough of people going into a system that makes them worse, that makes them come out hardened criminals." And by the way, on the process issue, if you can't support this because of the process issue, how can you support the $50 million measure for gang services? That's a measure that we, as a legislative body, can decide. We don't have to go to the public. We could allocate money out of the general fund for that. But we've chosen to go to the public. Same thing here. So fundamentally, it boils down to whether you believe we need more rehabilitative services. This is the measure, the opportunity to do so, or whether you don't. Don't cloud the issue, you know, and, you know, the Police Protective League, we all love them. And, you know, this is about what you, what do you believe in your heart? Do you believe we can help people through rehabilitative services? Or do you believe that's a waste of money, and we ought to put it someplace else? That's what the vote boils down to. I'll hopefully, I'll speak again.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really liked this healthy discussion. It is very good in a democracy that we have this honest discussion. Mr. Westen, you were absolutely great. What I liked the most was the pointing out of what is needed to undo it up in Sacramento. That is so significant. I don't think anybody understands that. But, folks, you know where I've come out on the issue about drugs. I happen to believe the laws of the '80s are bad laws. I think we have too many people in prison for smoking pot, or whatever else their story is. More people in prison than anywhere else on earth, 2.3 million, $55 billion a year. We're less than 5% of the world's population. We have over 25% of the world's incarceration. We spend more time on building prisons and cop unions around prisons than we do on schools and other major moments. Also, what I don't like about the present drug laws is that we take kids, we stick them into the criminal justice system, they come out as criminals, and they end up being in worse shape. And I also don't like the fact that gangs get their money from illicit drugs, and that's how they can keep things going. But saying that, let me explain something here. I have wrestled with this issue since it came out. I've read this pamphlet, and I've talked to lots of people. Judge Gray called me en route here. Judge Gray has been in the business for 25 years as a judge. I used to have him on my show. And he used to talk about the war on drugs as a war on people. I also spoke, after I spoke to Judge Gray, to a criminal defense attorney that absolutely represents clinics and frankly considers the marijuana law insane. And now, then I get a call from Steve Cooley, who has integrity beyond most I've ever seen for a guy who is in a position like that. And here's where I come out. Frankly, there's loopholes in this piece of legislation. If you're on crack cocaine, or you're on some other crazy drug, and you commit a crime of property, you break into somebody's house and you say, "This is for my habit," you then are not necessarily going to go to jail. You're going to go to a rehab program. This is wrong. To me, your behavior is the issue. Your status doesn't matter. I don't care if you're drinking booze. I don't care if you've got prescription drugs from the local doctor, or you're doing something else that is considered illegal today. Your status doesn't matter to me. It's your behavior. If you step out of your moment and you commit a crime, you should be convicted for that crime. In other words, no property crimes, no carjacking, no nothing. That is wrong stuff. You might not agree with the drug laws. The people in California did 215. The feds come in, and they say it's crazy. So we're making an effort here. What we really need to do is change the drug laws out of Washington, number one. So people don't go to prison for their status. But they should go to prison for their behavior. If you're going to commit a crime, a crime against property or somebody else, you should not go to a drug diversion program. That crime in and of itself is worth going to incarceration. But putting people in jail for smoking pot is nuts. The laws are bad that do that. So you're trying to solve a bigger problem with this proposition. I like Suresh, the guy bankrolled it. He's a social engineer all over the earth. But I got to make it very clear. I'm voting no on 5 because it doesn't do the right thing. It continues to allow behavior to go unchecked. And behavior is what I'm concerned about. And when I went through all of this discussion, it clearly is the behavior issue that I have a problem with. It isn't the use of drugs. It's what you might do on those drugs. And if you do something on those drugs that offends me, or my property, or my livelihood, I think you should be incarcerated. So as much as there's good intentions on some of it, it's flawed, it's too complex, it's confusing. And therefore, I urge everyone to vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I really do appreciate this conversation, just like Mr. Rosenthal, because I think it informs all of us and informs the public about the different views that people may have on this subject. For me, as with Mr. Rosen, I do believe that we have screwed up federal drug laws that treats drug addiction with criminal justice, as opposed to treating it as a health issue, as it should. And what has resulted is overcrowded jails. People that do need health attention are dealt with, with just being put behind bars where their drug addiction gets worse, and they come out in even worse manner than when they went in. However, as some of the other speakers mentioned today, there are some loopholes in this. And where I come down on this is that I support Proposition 36. I think that's a good thing to do, to focus more on rehabilitation. We've been focusing too much on simply locking people up. However, as we speak right now, people are working to fix Proposition 36 and make it even better. There's a lot of things that are not working under Proposition 36. There are efforts underway as we speak to improve it. And as opposed to, or what Prop 5 is trying to do, is implement more regulations, more rules, a new way of looking at this, as opposed to fixing what we already have. That, in addition to some of the other loopholes that have been mentioned, gets me to be a no on five. I've put in a motion to amend Mr. Zine's rules and Weiss's motion that states, should this motion pass, that the city of Los Angeles also wishes to make clear that it supports the goal of providing greater opportunities for rehabilitation of prisoners as a way to reduce recidivism and lower the incarceration costs for taxpayers. The state should strive to ensure that proper resources are devoted to rehabilitation programs. In my view, that supports the idea that we need to continue to work with Proposition 36, but Prop 5 is not the right way to do it, may lead us down a different path, as opposed to focus on Prop 36 and fixing what we already have. Thank you. I hope you could vote aye on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Is there any objection to the amendment? If not, will be accepted as a friendly amendment. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Councilman Cardenas and Adha Committee. We had a very thorough discussion, it was a very emotional one. We had youngsters who had been in prison, who had did some time, and came out and said, I'm now rehabilitated, I need to support Proposition 5, because what I learned in prison didn't help me. When I was trying to get treatment, as a matter of fact, when I started in the process of getting my GED, I actually got the paperwork done after I've done my two years, and as I was leaving. So the system has not been working in our prison systems. It is not functioning. I mean, these prisons have become essentially a feeding ground for the gangs. It's become the high school for gangs. But I also asked this young man, you know, I grew up in the neighborhoods, and I have friends and folks who I've grown up with, and, and they tell me, you know what, Ed, they call me Eddie in the neighborhood, they're going to give you the convict mentality. They're going to tell you that I'm okay, that I'm doing this, I'm doing that, but in reality, they're still doing what they do. They're doing the drugs, they're stealing, they're robbing, do what they gotta do to feed their habit. But they will tell you in your face that I'm doing better, because it's the way to get by, the way to get away with it. So I'm very, very torn about what this is about. You know, four or five of our districts, 40% of our communities are at poverty, or below poverty. The way the people get by is through the sale of drugs, let's be frank about that. And the gangs fight each other to control the sale of drugs. That's our sub-economy in this city, if not in this country. But when I look at what has to be done to change this law, to improve it, it just blew me away right now, what Councilman Weston stated. That was not a fact that I was aware of. And to change this law, if it doesn't work, will be almost impossible, Mr. Speaker. And that, to me, we can't let that happen, because we need to fix what's already not working today. And Councilman Cardenas, you're right. This society has failed our children. We are multiplying our dollars to imprison them, not to educate them. And that's wrong. But for us to put ourselves in a freeze frame with this legislation, because we can't change it and prove it, is something, it's a price that's too high, it's a price that's too high to pay. And that, for me, is what is pushing me on the no side. You know, I just hope that those of you who are out there, working with our youngsters, working with gang intervention, working with the ones who are stuck in that downward spiral, that this is not the end of our actions. We're going to improve upon this. And it'd be who's us, council members, to bring up resolutions, and hopefully, Councilman Cardenas with your expertise, Councilman Weston, that we can find the right language that gets us a sponsorship in Sacramento to do what's great, to do what's important for our city. That's our responsibility. And we look to you for your leadership on that. So I do look at this with a very, very, with a very heavy heart, because I know what it's going to mean, mean day to day, for those families who are trapped in their apartments, trapped in houses, because of the gang violence and the drug dealing going on outside, on their very own porch. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Zine for a second time, and Mr. Cardenas for a second time. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not torn with this at all. Maybe it's because I've seen too many crime victims. When you talk about nonviolent crime, I don't consider domestic violence a nonviolent crime. Domestic violence is a crime of violence. And it says domestic violence is not a violent crime? It is a violent crime. We had domestic violence, people in here a few days ago, talking about the impact on women, domestic violence. It's a, it's a violent crime. To say it's a nonviolent crime is a farce. When you talk about the other alleged nonviolent crimes, when you talk about child abuse, child abuse is a violent crime? They want to say it's not a violent crime? It's absurd to say a child abuse is a nonviolent crime. This is taking the criminal sanctions, and as I illustrated, throwing them away. And this is the beginning of anarchy in a society, when we take the laws to try to keep people in a civilized environment. We hire police officers to go out and protect and serve. Councilmember Smith and I served in the LAPD. I've got 40 years of service with the LAPD. I've seen crime victim after crime victim. And they turn to society and they say, who's protecting us? Well, now we're going to say, I'm under the influence of drugs, so it's okay. I'm the councilman that brought in medicinal marijuana, to say that we should authorize medicinal marijuana. I sanction medicinal marijuana for people who are medically infirmed, and they need medical marijuana, I believe in that. But this whole issue about drugs and an excuse for committing a crime, that's the key here. It's committing a crime. Whether it's committing robbery, or breaking into someone's house and committing burglary, we have a standard in society, you respect the law. And when you violate the law, then there's consequences. Now, we talk about these offenders. How many times does the offender commit an act before they get caught? How many times is someone going to commit a crime of domestic violence, or child abuse, or identity theft, or grand theft auto, before they get caught? They don't get caught the first time. The average drunk driver drives drunk 2,000 times before they get caught the first time. How many times do people commit violations of the law before they get caught? So the ones that they catch, that's the exception rather than the rule. And then we're going to make another excuse to say it's okay. We're spending a lot of money on the criminal justice system, we're spending a lot of money on our police officers, and when we take a position against something to protect society, we are really violating our oath that we take when we become elected officials to protect the people of a city, and to support law enforcement in the city. Because it comes somewhat hypocritical when we say, well, we're going to do it today, we're not going to do it tomorrow. And I've seen crime victim after crime victim come before this body, where we have this compassion, this concern, and then we're going to flip-flop and say, well, it's okay, because you're under the influence of drugs. That's a choice. If they want to smoke dope, if they want to shoot heroin, if they want to go to Skid Row and live on Skid Row, that's a choice they make. There's rehab programs, there's all kinds of programs. But we come to the point where we're saying, the cost is going to be on the local government, number one, it's not going to be the state. The cost is going to be to human lives, it's going to be to our society. And I don't feel any, any hesitancy of saying no on five. Absolutely no hesitancy at all, because you look at the facts, you look at the figures, you look at what we are responsible for. And you want to talk about drugs, go to Mexico and see how many police officers and chiefs of police are getting killed because of the drug cartel. You want to talk about drugs? In Mexico, you can't go down to Tijuana because people are so in fear, because the drug cartel's taking over. They're killing police officers, and they're killing their families. Drugs are a scourge of society. But just turn to Tijuana and see how bad it's gotten because of drug cartel. So now we're going to say, okay, it's an excuse. It's no excuse. It's no excuse for criminal behavior, it's no excuse for domestic violence, it's no excuse for any of the criminal activity. And once we start opening the door to this, then we're going to open the door to robbery, we're going to open the door to other criminal elements of our society. People have to be held accountable. We're not talking about kids, we're talking about adults. When you're 18, you can go to war, when you're 18, you can drive a car, when you're 21, you can drink. And we're talking about adults, we're not talking about youth, we're not talking about kids, we're talking about adults. And if they're not held accountable and responsible, then we're doing a disservice to society as an elected body of the city of Los Angeles.
Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Dennis, there's a lot of the rhetoric that you just said that I agree with. When it comes to violent felons, violent crimes, I'm with you 100%, but that's not what this issue is about. It's about, it's about nonviolent offenders. Push your button again, Mr. Zine, but the fact of the, the fact of the matter is this. If it's a domestic violence case, and the person actually hit somebody, or pulled a gun on them, or what have you, then that's a violent crime. They will be on the docket with those crimes as well. So this would not apply to what you described, Mr. Zine. And I wish Bernard Parks were here with his 37 years of experience, and he's seen much of what you've seen, Mr. Zine, but he seconded the motion, opposite of your motion, when it comes to, he agrees that it should be yes on five. At this time, I'd like to ask the CLA, Mr. Miller, to come up, please, and if you could hold my time, Mr. President. Mr. Miller, the CLA submitted a report, correct?
Yes.
On this matter? So basically, an analysis to advise the council as to what it's about, and then advise us as to what your recommend, your office's recommendation is on it. Who actually did the report?
Mr. Diering, if I may, worked on it.
Okay. And, but you're here in council today, because it sounds like this is an issue that your office is very, you're watching carefully, and you want to make sure we get accurate information, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then I have a question for you and your staff, and that is, why is it in your report, when you talk about the fiscal effects of Proposition 5, you are not being equal in describing what the Legislative Analyst Office for the state of California provided you for your report? You mentioned that the Legislative Analyst Office says that the LAO cites potentially $1 billion in increased state operating costs to expand drug treatment and rehabilitation through three-track system, et cetera, et cetera. But you negated to point out that in almost identical language in their report, they used the same sentence to say that, but also, there could be $1 billion in savings. But you failed to put that in your report. And before you answer the question, in addition to that, right next to that second statement in the state LAO report, it talks about potentially $2.5 billion that the state could save by not having to build more prisons. But you failed to include that in your report. It's important for us to understand, because many people here, including the Police Protective League, and, and somebody came on behalf, Mr. Gannon came on behalf of the chief of police, saying that he opposes it, and everybody mentions also the fiscal impacts. But even your neutral report does not include the offset of the billion-dollar savings potentially, and the offset of $2.5 billion in savings of state general fund in order not to build prisons. My time, please.
Well, we do say, Councilman, on page four of the report, that
Correct.
The LAO does acknowledge that costs could, could or would be offset by potentially having to build fewer prisons.
Yes, Mr. Miller, but you didn't put down the amount. Why did your report omit the amount? You didn't fail to omit the amount of $1 billion to talk about what the cost could be, but you didn't accurately state the potential, the billion-dollar amount on the potential cost savings, and the $2.5 billion either. Yes, you mention it, but you don't give it equal weight, and you don't give it equal report in your report. That's my question.
Well, Mr. Cardenas, I think, I think that the message that we got from the LAO is that they were really uncertain about what the potential savings and costs could be. Again, there's an appropriation of $406 million for drug treatment programs, they believe that could cost up to $1 billion. They do indicate that there could, and maybe savings from building fewer prisons and decreasing the prison population, but essentially, they weren't certain about that. So my understanding is that their indication was that they were very uncertain about the potential that cost.
Well, Mr. Miller, you're forcing me to read the exact language, the sentence that talks about the $1 billion in increased costs, I will read it for you and your staff. This measure, this is the CLA verbatim, and I quote, "This measure could eventually result in an increase in state costs exceeding $1 billion annually, mainly for program and administration of an expansion of drug treatment and other services provided for eligible offenders." Now, I'm going to read from the potential in decrease in costs, and I quote, "This measure could result in a reduction in state operating costs that could eventually exceed $1 billion annually, due mainly to reductions in prison and parole supervision caseloads as discussed below." They're almost identical in their description of where they come up with $1 billion. But you failed to point out that they say, the equal statement, almost word for word, the cost potential and the potential cost savings, word for word. And yes, there are paragraphs describing how they arrive at that on both sides. But what I don't like is that your report actually says $1 billion potential cost, but does not reflect the potential $1 billion in savings, or the potential $2.5 billion in savings as well. You're not giving it equal weight. And what I don't like is that coincidentally, your report says, and one of the main reasons why you're telling this council body why we should oppose Proposition 5, is the main reason is because of cost, potential cost. Is that not the case?
That is one of the reasons why we are recommending opposition to Proposition 5.
Yeah, but why would you recommend that when one side says potentially $1 billion in, in, in cost increase, and potentially cost decrease of $1 billion, and then throw in an added bonus, potentially $2.5 billion savings to the state general fund as well?
Well, I think what's also unknown, Mr. Cardenas, is the impact potentially on county and local governments from the drug treatment rehabilitation programs. I don't believe that the LAO dealt extensively with the potential on, on the judicial system and, and the oversight of, of some of the people that are on the diversion programs.
But, Mr. Miller, at the same time, if you're going to give that much weight to those, those interpretations, why aren't you not giving equal weight to the other interpretations that potentially could benefit the city as well, and benefit the county as well? We're not even getting into the potential benefit of someone who is no longer on drugs and doesn't commit subsequent 30, 40, 50 crimes before they get caught, because they're trying to feed a daily habit. We're not even getting into that, I'm not asking you to. But what, what bothers me is there were plenty of factual information from a body, with all due respect, do you respect the Legislative Analyst Office reports? When they come out with them, do you believe that they are fair and balanced? Do you believe that they do know what they're talking about in their analyses?
Yes.
Then why didn't you give them that weight in this report?
With respect to the $1 billion in increased costs, and, and how that same figure, $1 billion, is not also mentioned in the savings? The report here references that these costs may be offset by the diversion of offenders from state prisons due to these programs. We haven't identified the actual number, although it is implied that that number, $1 billion, would be offset, which is what the Legislative Analyst Office in the state of California identified to be. The reasons that it gave in the analysis you just referred to are essentially what's included in this report here. Beyond that, beyond what can be identified as increased costs to conduct these programs, and the ultimate savings through reduced prison loads and rates of incarceration, beyond identification of, of those items, the Legislative Analyst Office analysis is fairly limiting to any other true fiscal impacts, other than a total number of $1 billion in potential offsets one way or another.
But with all due respect, and I read it to you, where it said, when it comes to the increase in costs, it says this measure could eventually result, and then they mention $1 billion. And then when it talks about the decrease, it says exactly the same thing, this measure could result in a reduction, and then they mention $1 billion. You allowed yourself to give it the weight of the billion-dollar in potential increase, but you did not allow yourself to give the same information to this body when it came to the decreases as well. And on top of that, you don't even mention the $2.5 billion number. The problem that I have is, the way in which you wrote this report, just on those two points alone, jeopardizes the neutrality of your report, instead of just telling it like it is. Sure, your conclusion is your conclusion on a different page, but on that page, you didn't give it the equal responsibility of putting it down as a fact, a point in fact of the report of the LAO. You took the time to do so and quote them when it comes to the expense, but you did not take the time to quote them when it comes to the savings. And both of them, I might add, and please, help me out here, are both of them estimates? Are both of them case in point in fact, or they both estimates on both sides, the billion savings and the billion costs?
They're both estimates summed to be $1 billion.
Exactly. This body deserves to know that in a report like this.
The report mentions that there's $1 billion in increased costs. It does not refer to the actual number of $1 billion in estimated savings. It does mention that these costs may be offset for the reasons listed by the LAO. It does not identify
Yeah, but the thing is, with all due respect, if I'm going to go buy something, and somebody says, this vehicle is $30,000, and then I say, well, how about this vehicle? And they say, well, that vehicle's kind of expensive. You get what I'm saying? You're sitting there, you have the sticker price on one window, you have sticker price on the other, it's evident, it's obvious, it's black and white, just stated in black and white. Because when you don't give it that equal
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
That equal responsibility and clarity, then that leaves room for people to assume that there's an agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
I'll push my button again, Mr. President.
Mr. Alacon, for a second time.
Colleagues, Mr. Zine would have you believe that to vote to support Proposition 5 would be a vote to reduce resources to enforce the law in such a way as to incarcerate folks. Prop 5 doesn't do that. Mr. Zine would have you believe that everybody that fits this category is going to end up in rehab. That is not what Prop 5 does. Mr. Zine would have you believe that to support Prop 5 would be to support criminals. I don't think anybody's really accusing Tony and me, with all the votes that we've given on, on police department issues, that kind of allegation. Let's talk about what Prop 5 does. Prop 5 provides an additional investment in a system that is woefully lacking. It doesn't take a dime away from criminal incarceration. Secondly, it doesn't stop the, Mr. Rosendahl, before you leave, let me tell you, you said you want them to be convicted. This doesn't stop one person from being convicted. It merely changes the, the sentence. And believe me, going to rehab for these people is a sentence. It is, you know, so, and finally, it, it merely says that you let a judge decide whether somebody should go to jail, or whether they should be rehabilitated, whether there's any possibility whatsoever. to jail or whether they should be rehabilitated, whether there's any possibility whatsoever. In the cases that were described by Mr. Zine, I have no doubt that a judge will send these people to jail. But in many cases where there's some extenuating circumstances, for example, in a domestic violence case where maybe both parties need counseling, which is typically the case in domestic violence cases, and I know you, Mr. Zine, know that, maybe they're trying to keep the family together. But the point I really want to emphasize is that this isn't taking money away from the jail system, the prison system. It's adding more resources so that the prison system can actually change some of these folks for the better. Because we know that the recidivism rate in the state of California is one of the highest in the entire world, not just in California, but in the entire world. So to support Prop 5 is to say to the legislature, to say to the governor, to say to the system, "We need you to do a better job. We're sending $350 million your way to rehabilitate some people who are on the lower end of the crime scale to try and get them rehabilitated so that when they come back, they won't do worse crimes. They won't be recidivists." So, look, this is a difficult issue, and this debate is, I think, fruitful to the extent that we are sticking with the facts. Prop 5 is a measure that would enhance our ability to enforce the law. Prop 5 is a measure that would expand the opportunities for us to rehabilitate some of the folks who can be rehabilitated. And Prop 5 is a measure that will be better for California in the long run, and it will save dollars in the long run.
Thank you, Ms. Chalkon.
So with that, I urge you to reconsider your statements to be opposed to Prop 5. It is short-sighted, I believe, to think that the existing system is acceptable.
Thank you. Mr. Smith and then Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Smith?
Call for the question.
Okay. President, call Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I would like to offer a substitute motion, so we can vote on that first. I'd like to ask that we vote on taking, that the city council take a neutral position on Proposition 5.
Well, if there's an objection to calling the question, we first call the question. We take a vote on that and then...
Object.
So there's an objection, so we will take the vote. Everybody who wanted to speak twice has spoken, so this is an eight-person vote as opposed to a 10-person vote. A yes vote is to end debate. Okay? Yes, Mr. Cardenas?
What are we voting on?
This is to end debate, to call the question. If Mr. Smith wants to withdraw, he's just offering that, or we can vote on it, either way. But right now, before us, we have the vote on calling the question, which is to end debate, and nobody can offer any more motions if debate is ended. Okay? Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
Okay, that is called. We have two items before us, number 20 and number 23. Number 20 is the position to oppose Prop 5. That will be taken up first. We take a position on that. We'll see if the will of the body is to take up anything on 23. Obviously, it would negate that. 20 is the first one, and that is to take a position. Mr. Zine's motion, as amended by Mr. Weezer, the friendly amendment on general support of rehabilitation funding. Yes, Mr. Zine?
Oppose 5 with the added...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, everybody clear? Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, two noes.
Okay. We have item 23 before us. That will be next.
Motion on item 23.
Okay.
Do we take a neutral position on Proposition 5?
We have that before us. Mr. Alacon, do you have a...
No, I'm voting no.
Oh, that's you. You're pressing your button a little early. Okay. So this would be first to substitute on 23 whether or not to take a neutral position. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, eight noes.
Okay, that fails. We now have 23 before us. We can either vote on it, we can be moved to receive and filed, but we have the vote right now otherwise, which is, obviously, the yes vote on this is to be in favor and support Prop 5. So please open the roll. A no vote is to oppose Prop 5. A yes vote is to support Prop 5. Yes is to support Prop 5. No is to oppose Prop 5. We have now Mr. Cardenas's...
We have...
We haven't taken it yet. We haven't taken it. Okay, can... We haven't opened the roll. Hold on, hold on. Okay.
Want me to clear it?
Please clear it, and we will open the roll momentarily. Again, a yes vote is yes on 5. A no vote is no on 5. It's as easy. This is Mr. Cardenas's. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Three ayes, nine noes.
Okay, that does not carry. So we took the position on item 20. There are two separate motions, so we had to take votes on both of them. Okay?
Mr. Reyes was not here, so... I mean, I think he was not in the room, so I don't know if he's still here or not.
Okay, we will check that to reflect whether or not Mr. Reyes should have been taken up.
Wasn't there?
Mr. Zine, please. He wasn't here.
You can take the trashcan off your desk now, Mr. Zine, I think. We're on to our next item. Next item, please.
Next item is 21, and that is the mayor's veto message.
Okay, we have comment cards on this. We'll take first. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker, and then Zumadog on item 21.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, it doesn't, just doesn't make sense, whatever the mayor's veto for $96,000. Didn't yesterday's agenda include an item to increase lawyers' fees paid to outside attorneys by $27,000? And, I mean, not yesterday, Wednesday's agenda, and then also the Housing Department, the Housing Agency just also asked for over $4 million plus to pay for lawyer retainers, outside counsel for housing litigation. So $96,000 chum-chum change. Thank you.
Next speaker, Zumadog.
Yes, this is interesting because the mayor, if I correct it, raise your hand if I am incorrect, the mayor is against this, city council is for this. Okay, so city council, then, they want to spend $96,000 for outside counsel. The mayor is against it. First of all, regarding the city attorney's office, the reason we're in this position, we have 800 city attorneys under Rocky Delgado. Why do we have to keep hiring outside counsel? Because basically, they're a laughingstock of the city, and they just get pushed around and bullied. That's why we need leadership like Carmen Nuch Trutanich as city attorney, who will stand up. And we, basically, the city attorney is like public defender. So city council doesn't want their own city attorneys. It's like having a public defender, so now you've got to spend all this outside money. Now I'm going to do something, I really don't do this, I'm going to go through my thought process for the people on TV and council. Here's my take on this. Well, if this is to spend $96,000 on outside counsel, the city is getting sued. So if the mayor is against it, that means the mayor wants this to lose. The mayor does not want, you know, he... You've got combativeness between city council and the mayor. It's really tough to tell, but this is all about politics. The mayor doesn't want to spend the money because he knows it will help, because the city attorneys are just laughingstock people that get pushed around, that of course, the mayor would, oh... This is very confusing. That's why it's so confusing. The point is, we're having to spend money on outside counsel because we have a city attorney under Rocky Delgado that's just a laughingstock of the city. People know they can sue the city, and then they just have to settle. We need true leadership. I say no. Okay, here's what I say. Vote no on outside counsel money and instill leadership into the city attorney's office. We have an opportunity with Carmen Nuch Trutanich, who will be running against Jack Weiss, and I say vote for Carmen Nuch Trutanich.
We're on the veto message. Thank you.
Okay, and so we will put an end to this type of frivolous outside counsel.
Okay, and thank you for being so forthcoming with your thought process there. Always appreciate that. Ms. Grul is our next speaker.
Thank you. Colleagues, what I'd ask for is a receive and file on this item, which would uphold the mayor's veto and not hire outside counsel at this time.
Okay, without objection, we will go ahead then and receive and file that. Next item, please. Objection, so ordered. Next item, please.
Next is item 24, and there's a card on this item.
Item 24 is next before us. We have Rosalind Gold is our first speaker, and then Alan Clayton. Thank you for your patience, and we now have before us the Prop 11 resolution, colleagues. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President and fellow council members. I'm Rosalind Gold with the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials, and together with California's leading voting rights organizations, we're here to urge the Los Angeles City Council to approve the resolution opposing Proposition 11. Proposition 11 is a fundamentally flawed ballot measure that will impede genuine redistricting reform and will jeopardize opportunities for all Californians to be fairly represented in the state's democracy. I wanted to, first of all, very much commend the leadership of Councilmember Alarcon, who together with Councilmembers Cardenas, Reyes, Wesson, Weezer, Council President Garcetti, and Councilmember Parks, have brought this important issue to the City Hall. Proposition 11 would take the important job of drawing state district lines and put it in the hands of a commission which is not accountable to the public. The commissioners would be chosen through a confusing process with no public input and with no guarantee that the commissioners would have the skills and expertise they need to do the job. More importantly, this process will not guarantee that these commissioners will represent the geographic and ethnic diversity of our state. Our communities have worked very hard to make progress to be represented in our democracy, and this proposition would turn the clock back on our process, progress. The measure also would create a two-pronged approach to redistricting that would leave congressional redistricting in the hands of the state legislature, but move state redistricting into the hands of the state legislature. And as a result, it would make it much more difficult for the public to participate in the redistricting process because there would be multiple hearings. I just wanted to conclude by saying Proposition 11 is the wrong answer to redistricting reform, and that's why groups like NALEO, the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund, the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, and the Willie Velasquez Institute urge you to oppose Proposition 11. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments today. Alan Clayton is our next speaker. Eugene Lee will follow.
Thank you, Council President and members. I've been involved in redistricting since '86. I was actually involved in all city council redistrictings, school board, board of supervisors, and I've been involved in the legislative redistricting for 22 years. So I have a lot of experience in this area. This is a seriously flawed initiative and should be opposed. Some of the organizations that do oppose this, that have not been mentioned, are the Legislative Black Caucus, your colleagues in Sacramento, the Latino Legislative Caucus opposes it, the Congressional delegation, Democratic Congressional delegation opposes it, the Black Congressional Caucus opposes it, the Asian Pacific Islander Congressional Caucus, the Hispanic Congressional Caucus oppose it. As I already mentioned, the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, MalDIF, and many other organizations oppose it, and the California Democratic Party. My belief is, based on my experience in redistricting, and I have drawn maps that have been adopted and have been reviewed through the competitive process, is that what could happen, the unintended consequences, is we could have a reduction in terms of both African-American and Latino representation in the legislature. There's a belief out there, Congress is not covered, it's covered by the criteria. The criteria could result in a serious problem in terms of black and Latino representation. There's a court case that just went before the Supreme Court for oral arguments, Bartlet v. Strickland, where they're challenging an African-American district, and I believe that case will be upheld, unfortunately, and what it will result in is challenges to many African-American districts in North Carolina. The same could happen in California, because that case sets a rule for the Voting Rights Act, which seriously changes it, which says that you need to be 50% of the voting age population to be protected. There's no African-American district in California that is 50%. And there are many Latino districts that are not 50%. So this is a very flawed initiative. I urge you to support the resolution and vote no on this flawed initiative.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Eugene Lee. After that is Arnold Sacks. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. President and council members. My name is Eugene Lee, and I'm an attorney at the Asian Pacific American Legal Center, which is a nonprofit civil rights organization. We oppose Proposition 11 because we believe it'll have a negative impact on minority communities during the statewide redistricting process. We believe that some changes need to be made to the redistricting process, and we've supported various reform proposals over the past several years. But however, we oppose Proposition 11 because we think it'll actually make it more likely that minority communities will get split apart during the redistricting process. This is because minority communities will have a diminished voice by having fewer seats at the map drawing table and more difficulty in providing input into the redistricting process, and also because of the rules that Prop 11 sets up for how these districts should be drawn. We urge the city council to pass this resolution to oppose Proposition 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that is Zumadog.
Yes, good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. I just find it amazing that with the expertise that sits around the city council chambers, who, from the members who previously served in the state legislation, to all of a sudden get hold of a crystal ball that will enable them to foresee that this new legislation, legislature, legislature will be enabled to tackle redistricting, when after three months, it took them three months to settle a budget. What thought process goes through your minds when you can consider that the legislation will act to take themselves out of power in the areas that they control? We have members here who have faced redistricting, I don't know, ever since California got admitted to the union as a state, and it's still an ongoing battle, redistricting. Every time the state legislation meets, redistricting is on a topic of agendas. It continues. What inside information do you have that this legislature that's going to convene will be any different than the previous ones? Let the public know that. Then maybe we can have a better debate on whether this is a good idea or a bad idea.
All right, last speaker, Zumadog.
Okay, yes, I will present both sides of this issue. I spoke with Councilmember Rosendahl, who gave me a lot of good information. He brought to the attention that this only applies to the Assembly and Senate and does not affect the Board of County Supervisors or Congress. Noel Weiss says, "So what? At least you start with this." And also, this, currently, the way that things are districted, it favors the incumbents, okay? It favors those in power, allows them to remain in power, and then you have a lot of disenfranchised people within the community that don't show up to vote, "Hey, I'm in the Democratic district, I'm a Republican, I'm an independent. Why even vote?" This would change the demographics, that would make it more balanced and will allow to have some real races. Currently, the races are over in the primary because of the way things are districted. And so I do believe that I have to think about it, but currently, I am a support of yes to do this. Now, my main concern, I don't like the fact Board of County Supervisors is not included in this, because I understand in some areas of the city, you have two or three Board of County Supervisors with their finger in the pie, and they don't even know what's going on anyway, so you're just tripling the nuttiness and bureaucracy and stupidity that is the Board of County Stup advisors. So I wish they could be included here. Arnold Schwarzenegger is for this. Okay, of course, he's trying to level the playing field. So yes, if you hear somebody, this favors the, okay, so the answer is yes on redistricting to get this ball rolling, and this is the only yes, I believe, in the election this season. Everything is no across the board, no, 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 and this does stand out as the only potential yes. At this point, I am putting a yes, support... At this point, I am putting a, uh, yes, uh, support. And check my blog, if I do change my mind, I know council members look for my endorsement on this, um, at zoomatimes.com, and then I'll also be discussing this issue further. My time's running out, so Casa Princesa tonight in Wezar's district, I'm inviting all council members to further this discussion. Thank you.
Very much, appreciate it. Uh, we have now the council members who'd like to be heard on this, starting with Mr. Zine. All right, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Zine, Mr. Alarcon made the motion, so I'm gonna go with him first. Mr. Alarcon.
Members, we just talked about, um, the responsibility of the legislature. This is one of the most fundamental responsibilities of the legislature, and yet, the proposals, the proposal is to take this fundamental responsibility away from them. The problem I have with this is not that I don't have a problem with the redistricting process, I do. I was very, uh, as a state senator, I was very upset at the redistricting, for example, of the congressional district, uh, districts in the San Fernando Valley. But the fact of the matter is that this would be a worse scenario, because if you want to talk about an old boy's network, the members of this commission would be five members from the largest political party, five members from the second-largest political party, and four other parties who are non-affiliated. Who are they? And how are you gonna hold them accountable for their actions? Are you gonna unelect them from office? You know, if we did the wrong thing in redistricting last time, at least you could vote against that person. These people would be totally independent from that responsibility, that accountability from the voters. So while the current redistricting process is not great, um, it, it does provide for at least that measure of accountability, and it does not put it in the hands of party bosses to make decisions. Um, at least in the legislature, there are a hundred and twenty people that have to consider this, um, matter and put the package together. But who are these fourteen people that would come together and not be unelectable, not be, uh, would not be held accountable except to the, the letter of the law, the Voting Rights Act, which by the way, if the issue is conformance to the Voting Rights Act of the federal government, you can sue the legislature now for their actions relative to redistricting, if it's in violation of the law. So, I don't want you to think that this is a, a simple, you know, empower the legislature. I did not like the last redistricting process. I voted for it not for my area, because in my area, I thought they did a horrible job. Uh, but I voted for it, um, because it was the only problem I had with the redistricting, uh, problem, and I didn't want to send the whole thing back. Um, but the real problem here is that the fourteen-member panel is not, uh, held accountable to their decisions, and there's no, there's no way to do so. So, I would urge that we send a message of opposition to, uh, Prop 11. Uh, it's not to say we oppose, uh, re, uh, reformation of the redistricting process relative to the state legislature, uh, it's just to say that this is flawed.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, moving to, uh, support this measure, and the reason is it's bipartisan support. You have the governor, Arnold Schwarzenegger, supporting it, along with a Democrat, Steve Wesley, former state controller, Legal Women Voters, Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, California Chamber of Commerce, Common Cause, Gray Davis, Jim Brulte from the Republican Party, Bob Hertzberg, Connie Rice, Civil Rights Attorney, NAACP California State Conference, ACLU supports this. And I find it interesting that I'm supporting some that they're supporting, League of California Cities, uh, and what Mr. Alarcon said, the independent fourteen people, that's what we need, independent fourteen people, to do this. State legislators have promised to do redistricting, they haven't done it, and this matter goes to getting it done. And if you look at the bipartisan support across the board, Democrat, Republican, there's a coalition of groups, both sides of the fence, including, uh, Erwin Chemerinsky, Dean of U.C. Irvine School of Law, who is on the more liberal side, as I sat with him on the Charter Commission, when you look at the bipartisan support for this, it'll finally bring about some success and some conclusion. The California Republican Assembly, California Taxpayers Association, the, uh, League of California Cities, which we're a member, LA City's a member of that. So it goes across the board, both Republican and Democratic support, and I think it's a good idea that we push to get this done. Again, as stated, there'll be fourteen independent people who will not be beholden to anyone except making the right decision when it comes to redistricting here in California. So I am strongly in favor in supporting Proposition 11. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President and, and, and members. Uh, I rise to, uh, just try to highlight a few things. If you look back in the legislature, twenty-plus years ago, if you look back at the individuals that sat around this horseshoe twenty-plus years ago, I have a feeling that the complexion of both bodies would look a lot different than it does today. The panel, fourteen-member panel, I don't know if they would understand the importance of ensuring that all Californians are afforded a true opportunity to be elected and that their rights are protected. I enjoy working here and seeing representation of every group in the world, even Zine, even Zine, it's a pleasure. Some days it's more pleasurable than others, and, but anyway, it's a pleasure. But what I wanted to say, you know, it, it really gets to me when people accuse the legislature of doing all of this bad stuff, we didn't do the districts right, and such and such. I, again, was in the legislature the last time we did two, uh, last time we did redistricting. And what I'd like to highlight, Mr. Zine, and those who would be supportive of this measure, this governor's measure, is that the seventy-eighth Assembly District, which is, I believe, in San Diego area, and the eightieth Assembly District, which is Palm Springs-ish, and the fifteenth Senate District, which is up north, everybody said, the legislature cut these districts up so that Democrats would win these districts. Guess what? The seventy-eighth Assembly District was won by a Republican. The eightieth Assembly District was won, won by a Republican. The fifteenth Assembly District was won by a Republican. I submit that this is a very competitive process, and I also think if the legislature is not engaged, then we, we may not be as diverse as we are, uh, today. So I, of course, am proud to stand with, uh, Mr. Alarcon and, and, and Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Wezar, Garcettis, and Parks, in asking you to support the, the measure that was put forth by Alarcon.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Rosendahl.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This is a tough one. It's not an easy one. But just to, uh, take a page from what Dennis Zine said, Gray Davis, Bob Hertzberg, Connie Rice, Ted Lu, Deborah Bowen, Daryl Steinberg, these are folks that frankly, in the League of Women Voters, that are very compelling. I did, I used to do a television show, you know, and every time there was an election, the real election was in the primary, because the districts are carved in such a way, uh, that it becomes a partisan thing. Uh, I frankly think we need to overhaul the whole system, the congressional delegations, the supervisors. I feel my district, the eleventh district, which was done after reapportionment in two thousand, is a contiguous district. We have the ocean on one side, the four oh five on the other, the mountains on the north, and El Segundo on the south. That's truly a geography, uh, of commonality with the ocean and, and all of these issues. I like my district from a non-gerrymandered standpoint. I don't like gerrymandered districts, I don't like carving special things out. I frankly believe that the more whole an area is geographically, the less weird and perversing looking just to capture certain energy is wrong. So, um, I'm going to vote against, uh, this motion. I think, uh, when I go to the polls, it's a hard one, I'm gonna vote yes on eleven, because it is a step in the right direction, it does begin the process of reform, it is just the first step. I look forward to the supervisory districts, I look forward to the congressional districts. Congressional districts, there's no change either when we elect these people. It's like, you know, you either gotta be a registered Democrat in a certain district, and that's where you can play in the primary, or a registered Republican in another district to make a difference there. So, League of Women Voters and, and all those people I just mentioned, uh, I'm gonna vote with you on that. So I'm gonna vote yes, uh, when I go to the polls on Measure 11. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cardenas.
Call for a question.
All right, um, that will close the debate that we have here before us. We have the resolution, uh, before us. It urges opposition, is the recommendation, so just to be clear with everybody, a yes vote is to oppose, a no vote is to oppose opposition, and to be for. You're voting no, Mr. Zine, I believe. Based on what you said, I think. Not because I'm telling you. So with that, let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, three noes.
That does not carry. There's, carries over to our next, that will carry over to our next meeting on Tuesday. Next item, please.
Next is item twenty-six, and there's a card on this item.
Okay, um, we have a couple cards on this, Kathy Fang on, uh, this one, and then Zuma Dog.
President Garcetti, I was actually here to speak on Proposition 11 and in favor of that, and to protest the fact that there wasn't any notice, particularly to the proponents of the, the, the proposal. It's, it's concerning to us that despite the fact that we contacted several offices yesterday evening, we were told that the hearing was gonna happen next week, and so we had to rush over here, and the only person to speak on behalf of the Prop 11 side was Zuma Dog. So we'd ask that in the future, notice actually be respected, and to the extent that something as serious as this is gonna be voted on, that both sides be given a fair chance to speak.
Absolutely, I'm sorry, we had, we had twenty-six on the card, that was my mistake, uh, that was in the upper corner there. Uh, we will be carrying that over till Tuesday and take it up again. Um, Zuma Dog is our next speaker on item twenty-six. I think you have one minute left, sir.
Yes, yes, and I'm quite proud, I, uh, changed Bill Rosendahl's opinion on that last one, I'm quite proud of that. I take total credit. Just kidding. Okay. All right, so right now what I'm gonna do is not really give a position, as much to explain this to people, because it's very important, I hope I don't run out of time. People that are concerned about the border and security of the homeland security of this great country, it says right here, "During the next five years to increase the number of Customs and Border Protection Officers, Agricultural Specialists, and Border Security Personnel for posting at the U.S. Ports of Entry and authorize..." A billion? Eric, I can't tell, there's too many zeros, I think that's a billion dollars, I've never seen so many. So it's a billion dollars for each of the fiscal years between two thousand nine and two thousand thirteen, "to make improvements to existing ports of entry in the United States of America and to improve border security for all the purpose stated." So what we're hearing here is that I think a lot of people will be happy who are concerned with national security, this will be spending a billion dollars to help fortify the ports, to help the United States of America remain the strong force and protected. So I guess a yes vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. We also had a card from Mr. Sachs, who had reached his limit, we'll enter that into the record as well. Um, if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. I believe we have a special one. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the city was notified that, that a technical correction to the police radio contract with Motorola, that council had approved October tenth, is required before next week in order to allow the city to take advantage of the financing agreement's lower interest rate. Immediate action is required to make those corrections today. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Is there anybody on the findings? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. On the findings, the City Attorney, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Pursuant to Rule twenty-three of the council, that is now before us. Ms. Gruel.
I just asked for an aye vote, this allows us to issue the, to be able to do the contract and not lose the, um, interest that we have.
Previously approved contract, okay. With that, we'll go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, there are motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Mr. President, there are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Han requests to leave at eleven AM on October twenty-second for city business, a motion is required.
That takes us down to how many?
To eleven.
Eleven. Oh, um, all right, I will move that. Ms. Gruel seconds, and she's excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused on October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for personal business, this meets policy.
She is excused.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused on November fourth for personal business, this meets policy.
She is excused.
Councilmember Zine requests to leave at eleven forty-five AM on October twenty-first and twenty-eight, and to be excused on December sixteenth for city bu, business, this meets policy.
Okay, that excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk.
All right, do we have any, uh, meeting announcements? If not...
AIDS Walk.
Business, business meetings, please. We, we, we try to, we do have a camera in the back for all, for all of our community meetings, so, but, we'll, we'll make sure we get a pitch for AIDS Walk back there from this weekend. Any other, uh, business announcements? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? Does anybody have adjourning motions?
Special one fourth with.
If we can send special one fourth with, without objection, and with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Alarcon, Gruel, Han, Wezar Labange, Parks, Perry, Rice, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present.
Okay, and with that, have a good...